We have, Andy is Bill there with you yet?
Uh, Cap, Cassinelli or?
Yeah.
He is not here.
Okay. Wasn't sure if he was gonna be there by in person or online?
I, I think he was gonna do on, online.
Okay.
Yeah, he indicated he'd be on Zoom.
Awesome. I guess I can show my smiling face too.
Ryan, Bill is not here yet, but you do have a quorum.
Okay. Commissioner Groves here, Commissioner McCarville's here, hi all. Be ready to get started. See if Bill joins us shortly.
I'm ready when you are, Mr. Chair.
Madam Clerk, thank you. Uh, hour have risen, or gotten to 6:00 PM. At this time, I'd like to call to order the regularly scheduled meeting of the Meridian Planning and Zoning Committee for the date of July 16th, and let's start with roll call.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Holland?
Here.
Commissioner Seal?
Here.
Commissioner McCarville?
Here.
Commissioner Grove?
Here.
I'm looking one more time for Commissioner Cassinelli. Commissioner Fitz, Fitzgerald?
Here.
Absent are Commissioners Pittsir and Commissioner Cassinelli.
Perfect. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Uh, the first item on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda. We do have two, uh, applications this evening that will be continuing to, uh, another date. Um, so that we're, we'll be opening those just for the reason for, or to allow them to be continued to the date they've requested, or that we can work with the staff. Uh, so with that, can I get a motion to accept the, uh, agenda as amended?
So moved.
So moved.
I have a motion, in a second, to approve the agenda as amended. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, same? Motion passes. Uh, next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. We have one item on the consent agenda, which is the finding of facts and conclusions of law for used to marketplace storage, H2020-0051. Is there any reason we need to pull this one out for discussion, or if not, can I get a motion to accept the consent agenda presented?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion in a second to accept the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Be opposed? Motion passes. Okay, at this time, I would like to kind of explain the quasi, kind of strange hybrid meeting we have going on. Uh, Commissioner Seal has been kind enough to take one for the team and be in council chambers tonight. Um, thanks, Commissioner Seal, for that. Um, we will open each item on our agenda and start with the staff report. Staff will report on the findings and how the application adheres to our comprehensive plan and uniform development code with the staff's recommendations. After the staff has made their presentation, the applicant will have an opportunity to come forward and present their case for approval of their application and respond to any staff comments. The approval, um, the applicant will have 15 minutes to make their presentation, and then after that, the applicant, um, will step down and will allow, uh, public testimony. Um, hopefully, there's folks in, uh, chambers that have signed up to testify and, uh, on the iPads that are there. Um, if not, if you're on Zoom with us, uh, the clerk will bring you over into the public, kind of panelist format on Zoom, so we can hear from you. Um, if you are speaking for an HOA, um, and represent that you are, I will give you an additional, uh, few minutes to speak on behalf of that HOA. If there are any questions on, or concerns with, uh, being on Zoom, or you're having any challenges, uh, please shoot an email to thecityclerk@meridiansity.org. Um, if you're just watching, uh, the proceedings, we would ask you to do that via the city's YouTube channel, which is meridiansity.org/live. Um, when you, when we open public testimony, we've had a couple of challenges with this in the future, or in the past. When we open the public testimony and we give the public an opportunity to have their three minutes to speak, after you're done with your three minutes, that's the, the option you had to speak, and we can't take additional testimony, or we would be you doing this forever. So, please get your points across in that three minutes, and we're gonna try to stick pretty close to that three-minute timeframe, um, and we'll go from there. So, moving on to the first item on our agenda, or, sorry, let me go back. Do you all would like to move the two items on our agenda to the top, so we can continue those, or we should just go through them? Any have a preference?
Let's go ahead and move them to the top.
Good. So, I, do I need a, can I, yes ma'am, go right ahead.
I just wanted to note for the record, Commissioner Cassinelli joined the meeting at 6:05 PM.
Welcome, Commissioner Cassinelli. Glad you're here, sir.
Um. Thank you. I finally found the Zoom link.
We're glad to hear, sir. Um, can I get a motion to, uh, adjust? Oh yeah, go ahead.
I was just gonna make the motion to adjust the agenda, um, to move item B and item D to, uh, the top of the agenda, so that we can work to continue those for a future date.
Second.
I have a motion in a second to adjust the agenda to deal with those continuances upfront. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
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 Be opposed? Motion passes. So, moving to the public hearing for Horse Meadow subdivision, H2020-0060. Uh, they've requested a continuance to August 20th, 2020. We have any issues with that? Any questions for staff on that date? Any concerns there from the team? If not, can I get a motion to get, to, uh, continue that hearing to the date of August 20th?
Yes, Chair.
Commissioner Seal?
Excuse me, sir. You'll have to come and identify yourself for the record.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna meet you and take you in a room where you can speak in there and be heard. These mics out there don't work.
Mr. Chair, to get this back on track, could we have staff present the basis for the continuance, ask if the applicant's here, and then get to public testimony?
Say that one more time, Andrea, I'm sorry.
So can we begin with staff? Regarding the basis for the continuance, then ask if the applicant is here, and then open for public testimony after that, and the applicant could respond and proceed.
Okay. Uh, sounds good. Bill, are you available, or Joe?
Mr. Chair, hi. Joe, I'm available.
Okay, go right ahead, Joe. Can you, we'll start with a staff report on requests for the continuance for a Horse Meadow subdivision.
Thank you, sir. Um, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. The applicant is requesting continuance to August 20th, uh, due to some access issues that came up late in the review process. Uh, we're still working through with that, with ACHD, so, um, they're just asking to, to take care of that and redesign the layout to accommodate that.
Any questions for staff?
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Cassinelli?
Uh, I'm assuming the calendar will hold it on the 20th?
Commissioner Cassinelli? Yes, that is correct. August 20th so far is, uh, pretty open, so that's why I, I told them to go to that date instead of, uh, August 6th, since we're full on August 6th.
Additional follow-up questions for staff? Uh, would the applicant like to join us to, uh, run the continuance request?
Mr. Chair?
Uh, Joe, go right ahead.
I do not believe that they are, uh, they are here tonight.
Okay. Uh, then we'll open it up to the person who'd like the public, who'd like to testify, uh, while they're here. Chris, are they with you, sir?
Ryan, they are here.
Okay.
This is Brent Alexander. I'm one of the, uh, other three, basically, five-acre property owners, five to seven acres in that area.
Sir, can you state your name and your address for the record, so we have that?
Brent Alexander, 4575 West Quarter Horse Lane, Meridian, Idaho, 83642.
Thank you. Go right ahead.
You mentioned, you, you just mentioned there's having some issues with access, and that was some of my questions, so I, basically, I'm gonna let this reschedule go through and show up in August, but I just want to also make sure they're gonna repost that date like they posted this one, so we have plenty of notice.
Joe, do you wanna speak to that, sir?
Mr. Chair, um, Mr. Alexander?
Yeah.
Typically, it is up to the commission to tell the applicant whether or not they need to repost the site or not. Generally, if there's the, the first continuance, we do not require them to repost the site, but that is a, in a commission's purview to do that or not.
So, okay, so what is the exact date of the continuance then? Cause I don't think, I, I wanna make sure we get notified, that's all I'm saying. I don't want something to go through over here. We've lived out there for years.
Yep.
And this is a big change to what they're proposing to us. The way they proposed to take our Quarter Horse Lane from us and put houses that face right on it. We're gonna have a lot of traffic now competing with Pine coming onto Black Cat Road, and that's just a few hundred yards up. Whole way it's laid out doesn't make any sense. So these are my concerns.
And Mr. Alexander, I think it will continue, likely it will be continued to August 20th. That's when we have an open timeframe. My other, just comment, and I made it to staff today, uh, earlier during our meeting, we had, uh, there's some access issues that they're working with ACHD on. There's also, it sounds like, some other legal issues you guys are working through on, um, some other areas, and I would hope that the applicant will work that out with you all before they get back. Uh, that would be my suggestion before bringing legal issues into the public hearing room. That's stuff for, to take care of amongst the group, so, uh, I've expressed that to, my concerns about that to the staff, and then they're gonna pass that along to, uh, just from the public, the written public comment we, we took, and we're got, we've gotten, there seems to be some, um, some, some issues over land there that are surveys in question, that I think need to be wrapped up before we ever deal with it. So, that's the, uh, Mr. Dodson, our planner, is gonna take care of that with the staff, or with the applicant, I'm sorry. And, um, we'll hopefully have that worked out by the time we get back, or we're gonna have some challenges working through it. So we, we don't wanna be the legal rambler, that's not our job.
Okay.
So that's just for your information. We'd have, there's some concerns out there on my part, um, that, that those are, we don't get in the middle of those kind of debates. Uh, we need a, we need a clean and clear, you know, application that is surveyed properly and has all the ducks in a row, or, or we can't really deal with it easily. So hopefully that will be worked out, and we wanna make sure that, that your, your folks are taken care of, and the legal issues are all, all wrapped up before they bring them to us.
Well, I appreciate you resetting this and, and listening to me, cause I got more information, and, and I see where you're coming from, and we'll just wait and see what the new revision looks like, because yeah, there's cross easements out there on that lane, and I own a piece of it, and some other people do, so, yeah, okay. I appreciate your time. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate you being there. Uh, is there anyone else that would like to testify in this application right now, uh, before we move to continue? If you're in Zoom, raise your hand, and Commissioner Seal will give me his eyes, and there's nobody else out there. Hearing none?
No, no one raised their hand. Nope.
Okay. Can we move forward, the motion to continue the H2020-0060 till the date of August 20th?
Mr. Chair, do we need to address if we need to have them renotice that, or at least send out a, another e, letter to neighbors in that vicinity?
That is absolutely up to the commission. So if that's something that we think we need to do, or you guys feel comfortable we need to renotice it, that's our purview, so, um, we can make that in the motion if you'd like.
I think renoticing and posting might be overkill, but if there's a way that we could notify the neighbors again, that the date's been changed to August 20th, I think that would be ideal somehow. Uh, whether that's just sending out another 300-foot property boundary notice to those owners. Uh, Joe, do you have a comment on what's easier there? It's easier to just change the sign, or if it's easier to send out a notification?
Commissioner Holland, um, I think that just changing the sign to the new date is probably sufficient.
Okay. Then I'll make a motion that we move to continue, um, the public hearing for Horse Meadow subdivision, H-2020-0060, to the date of August 20th, 2020, and that the applicant would change the sign posting to note that that date is changed.
Second.
Uh, the motion in a second to continue Horse Meadow subdivision to the date of August 20th, 2020. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Post same? That motion passes. Thank you very much, all. Uh, moving to the next item for continuance, uh, we like, open the public hearing for Prescott Ridge, H2020-0047. Um, Joe, is this yours, or is this Bill's? Or someone's?
Mr. Chair, this is Sonia's, actually. Uh, she's not yet in the chambers.
Okay. Um, do we have anyone who would like to, or is the applicant here tonight to testify on this application? In regards to their request to continue?
Mr. Chair, Stephanie Leonard is here. I'm moving her over to speak.
Good.
Stephanie, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Perfect, thank you. Uh, good evening.
Please state your name and your address for the record, please, ma'am. The floor's yours.
Uh, good evening, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, Stephanie Leonard, 9233 West State, Boise, 83714. We are respectfully requesting continuance on this project to work through coordinating utilities with an adjacent property. Um, we've been having some difficulty getting them to the actual site, and then, um, we also have spoken with staff, and they've got some recommended changes to our, uh, medical campus concept plan, that we would like to revise prior to bringing it before you. Um, so we request the, uh, the same date, August 20th. To give us a little bit more time to get those things finished.
Thank you, ma'am. Are there any questions for the applicant?
Um, Mr. Chair, Stephanie, does, does August 20th give you enough time to get through it? I know it looks like it's a fairly large application coming through.
Yeah. Um, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Holland, I believe it does. We're actually really close on the utilities bit. I think, um, we've been in, or I guess I should say, our client has been in conversations for quite some time with the property of the house, and I think that they're kind of making some headway, so we should be able to figure that out. And then, the content plan, um, the changes weren't super huge, and we already started on them, so I think that should be enough.
Okay. One question, one follow-up question for staff. Um, I know that Sonia's not in the room yet, but, um, we, we just continued the other application to August 20th as well. Um, can you tell us how many other applications?
Commissioner Holland, this would be the third hearing for that evening.
Okay. Thank you.
Any additional questions for the applicant, or for staff? Uh, is there any, anyone in the public, uh, that wishes to testify in this application? Please raise your hand on Zoom, or if you're in the audience, let us know you're there. Seeing Andy's eyes, he told me no. Um, with that being the case, can I get a motion?
Chair.
Go right ahead, sir.
Uh, a move that we continue Prescott Ridge, H2020-0047, uh, to the date of August 20th, 2020, uh, to allow the applicant, uh, to work through concerns pertaining to utility extension, allow more time to get comments from the school district and ACHD.
Second.
I have a motion in a second to continue the hearing for Prescott Ridge, H2020-0047 until the date of August 20th, 2020. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thanks, Stephanie. We look forward to seeing you on the 20th.
That's good. Thank you, guys.
Okay. Moving on to the first application for consideration tonight, is the public hearing that was continued from Ju, June 4th, Tequid Place subdivision, file number H2020-0006, and let's start with the staff report. Joe?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, uh, as Commissioner Fitzgerald stated, this was originally heard on May 7th, and it was continued to the date of June 4th. Um, prior to that meeting, staff did a site visit, and it was then, I, we decided that it was best to continue the project further, to continue working through some of the issues presented at that commission meeting on May 7th. And, since then, staff has received revised plans, and it has, those plans have corrected some of the issues previously discussed. I will try not to rehash everything, but generally speaking, the plan did change significantly, so I will probably cover everything all over again. The, uh, application before you is for annexation and zoning and preliminary plat. The site consists of 7.35 acres of land, currently zoned RUT, and is located at 1835 East Victory Road. The request for annexation and zoning is within R8 zoning designation, and the preliminary plat consists of 22 building lots and four common lots. One of the 22.
Joe, do you have your, sorry to interrupt you, but do you have the slides up that you can, somebody has it in front of them? There you go. Thank you, sir.
Yes. One of the 22 building lots contains the existing home that is to remain. The future land use designation for the subject's site is medium density residential, which allows detached single-family homes and requires that gross density resides between three and eight dwelling units per acre. The applicant's revised plat has a gross density of 2.99 dwelling units per acre, which can be rounded up to comply with the comprehensive plan. In addition, the applicant has reduced the number of lots since the previous commission hearing from 28 lots to 22. And, the proposed project is now proposed as one phase instead of two. The minimum property size is 4,784 square feet with an average buildable lot size of 10,318 square feet, which exceeds the 4,000 square foot minimum lot size requirement for the R8 zoning district. As noted, there is a home on the subject's site that is intended to remain and reside in one of the proposed building lots. The plan before you is the original plan that showed two different phases and more building lots. This is the new revised preliminary plat. In addition, some of the accessory structures on the property are proposed to remain. Any structures that remain on the property must comply with the dimensional standards of the requested R8 zoning, or they will be removed. Current access to the property is via driveway connection to East Victory Road. And the applicant is requesting that this access remain for the existing home. Keeping this access does not comply with city code or with ACHD policies. However, ACHD has amended their policies and offers our approval of keeping the access and cites, and cites the reasoning for this as the low number of vehicle trips that would occur from one home. Staff cannot support this due to code requirements that access be taken from a lesser classified street if it is available. Staff believes that if the existing access does not close at the time of this development, it may never be closed. Applicant, the applicant should be required to close the access to Victory Road and take access from the proposed new local street within the subdivision, East Fathom Street. The applicant is requesting a council waiver to keep this access. The applicant is also proposing to construct an emergency-only access that connects the proposed East Fathom Street to Victory Road in the very northwest corner of the site. Staff is recommending a condition of approval that this emergency access be constructed prior to any issuance of certificate of occupancy. Parking for the development is required to be provided in accord with the standards listed in UDC 113C-6 for detached single-family homes and based on the number of bedrooms per home. The proposed street sections are 33 feet wide, which would also offer on-street parking where no fire hydrants or curb cuts exist for driveways. In addition, the applicant has proposed a larger-than-normal cul-de-sac at the end, I should say, the south end of the development. This cul-de-sac has a 57-foot radius, which is nine feet wider than the standard requirement, or standard cul-de-sac of 48 feet, therefore allowing on-street parking along the edge of this cul-de-sac as well. The applicant has submitted sample elevations of the single-family homes for this project. The single-family homes are depicted as mostly single-story structures with a variety of finished materials with stone, stucco, and lap siding combinations. Some homes also depict extra-large spaces for RV storage. All single-family homes appear to meet design and architectural standards. In the northeast corner of the site, depicted in hatched red along the boundary, the master pathways plan shows a small section of multi-use pathway. The applicant has worked with both planning and park staff to propose a pathway easement in this location, instead of constructing the pathway. The easement is partially located within the irrigation district easement, and that portion of the pathway will be obtained by the city, or I should say, built by the city. The logic behind this is twofold. One, to minimize the impact to the existing homeowner, who is to remain, since the pathway would encroach into their back porch if it were entirely on the subject property. And two, to not construct a pathway that would lead to nowhere for the foreseeable future, since adjacent county property owners have shown little intention on redeveloping in the near future. Staff is supportive of this option to provide an easement that is shared between this property and the irrigation district, and to be constructed at a later date. Staff has spoken with the irrigation district, and they are also supportive of this easement, so long as they have the space for their 18, their existing 18-foot-wide access road. To ensure this small pathway section is built in the future, staff is recommending a DA provision that the multi-use pathway be constructed by this owner if the existing home is redeveloped or subdivided, prior to the city constructing the pathway and the easement. Otherwise, the city will build it via having control over the easement. Five-foot attached sidewalks are proposed along all internal local streets in accord with the standards in UDC 113A-17. A five-foot-wide detached sidewalk is required to be constructed with the required frontage improvements along Victory Road. This sidewalk should be constructed within the required 25-foot landscape buffer along Victory Road. A 25-foot-wide common lot is depicted on the plat, but is proposed with no new improvements. The applicant states that the existing and mature spruce trees along Victory Road have to be removed in order to construct the frontage improvements with a detached sidewalk. Staff finds that the existing trees do offer a quality landscape buffer between Victory and the proposed subdivision, but I'm afraid that if the frontage improvements do not occur now, they may never be installed. The frontage improvements are required by city code, and therefore, the applicant is asking for a council waiver to require the improvements at a later date when the lot with the existing home is redeveloped or subdivided in the future. A minimum of 10% qualified open space, meeting the standards listed in UDC 113G-3B, is required. Based on the proposed plat of 7.35 acres, a minimum of .74 acres of common open space should be provided, of qualified common open space, to be specific. According to the applicant's revised open space exhibit, the applicant is proposing approximately 39,888 square feet of open space, .92 acres, which is approximately 12.45%, consisting of common lots with open space. The exhibit also labels 32,295 square feet of that 39,000, approximately .74 acres, as qualifying open space. That's approximately 10.09%, just over the minimum. This is a reduction of approximately 10,000 square feet from the previous plat, the previous open space exhibit. I apologize. Let me go back to it. From this previous open space exhibit. The open space is primarily proposed as two common open space lots, with one residing in the very southeast corner of the site, and one more centralized but smaller. The common open space lot in the south of the proposed project is also going to be used for storm drainage, and meets the minimum 20,000 square feet lot size for that to count as open space by a few feet. The open space is to be available at the time of development, if the project is no longer being phased. All lots appear to meet, all common open space lots appear to meet UDC requirements to count towards the qualified open space. The proposed open space meets the minimum UDC requirements by less than 200 square feet. Staff finds that the proposed open space, again, meets the requirements but does not premier. The revised open space exhibit and plat has also presented a couple of issues regarding Lot 19, Block 1, which is the lot containing the temporary turnaround in the center of the development. The revised plat shows some of the non-qualifying, qualifying open space on this lot, which is the green area around it. Which the applicant has deemed this as non-buildable until the sub-street is extended via a plat note, and the temporary turnaround is removed. Staff agrees with this designation, but making it non-buildable and also including it in the overall open space depicts a potential issue in the future. Will this lot be a future common open space lot, or will it be a future buildable lot? Staff wants to ensure that all of the open space numbers, regardless of their qualifying or non-qualifying. Hmm, sorry. And the numbers of the building lots are confirmed prior to this application being developed. In addition, if Lot 19, Block 1 is intended to be a common open space lot in the future instead of a buildable lot, an additional small pocket of open space is not ideal. If this is the intended purpose of this lot, staff recommends that the applicant revise the plat to have the proposed open space more contiguous to each other. Minimally, the applicant should clarify what the intent of this lot is in the future. With the revised plat and the open space exhibit, the applicant has also not proposed an amenity. The future pathway cannot be counted as an amenity, as it is not being provided with this application and development. Staff requested that the landscape plan be revised to show an amenity on one of the common open space lots prior to the commission hearing, but staff did not receive those updated plans. The city has received a number of written testimony regarding this project dating back to the original public hearing date. Uh, some of them, we have received, I think, one or two since the continuance in June as well. Um, I'll go over these briefly. Um, Mrs. McLaugherty, which is a board member of the Tradewind subdivision HOA directly to the west, has concerns over additional traffic, being the only access for this development is through their subdivision. Um, cites issues with emergency response times and concerns over the drainage pond and its correct engineering. And in addition, height of homes abutting the east side of Tradewind's and the west side of this development. Tricia Garcia Brown, also a Tradewind subdivision resident, concerns over the single access into Teakwood through their subdivision. Um, Mrs. Mary DeChambeau, which is a neighbor to the east, concerns over construction vehicle traffic not utilizing their private road for access, her private road for access, and drainage concerns of Eight Mile Lateral, or Eight Mile Canal Creek, whatever word you'd like to use there. Um, Mr. Sandy Blazer, Tradewind's resident, has concerns over the single access into Teakwood and concerns over building height for those homes directly abutting Tradewind's as well. Mr. Mike McClure, Tuscany subdivision, which is to the south, concerns over pathway connections from his subdivision into this one. Um, his specific requests were that there would be a connection. Unfortunately, there are not any common open space lots adjacent to this, so there, there really is no way to do that. Um, and then again, Mrs. McLaugherty responded a little later and had the same concerns. Hopefully, commissioners were able to review those pictures of the pond in Tradewind's. My understanding is that there is no pond proposed here, but they are going to be using the, again, the open space lot in the south of the development as their storm drainage Despite these issues and the plat being of a minimum standard, staff does recommend approval. Staff notes that the commission should determine if this is an appropriate time for this annexation and inappropriateness of its quality. Staff will stand for questions. Thank you.
Uh, other questions for the staff? Mr. Holland.
Ms. Chair. Uh, just to clarify, Joe, the, the, uh, open space lot that's on the right side of our picture off of the cul-de-sac is the one that they're looking for drainage pond?
Commissioner Holland, that is correct.
And I thought I remembered seeing something that, did, did you have discussions with the applicant about ways to reconfigure the open space so it could be all a little bit more central and bigger instead of spread out into two smaller chunks? Did they have any comments back on that?
Uh, Commissioner Holland, members of the commission, I have not received any comments back about my staff report. Um, it is something that has been discussed more than a few times along different lines and for different reasons, but this is, uh, what they have revised and proposed.
Okay, thank you, Joe.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Commissioner Holland. Any additional questions for staff? Not hearing it this time. Would the applicant like to come forward, um, and give us a presentation on this application?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Dan Lardy, Levitt Associates, 1324 First Street South, Nampa, 83651. So, uh, first of all, let me, let me say thank you to, to Joe and, and to staff for, for helping out with this. We, we've been working hard at, at trying to make things, uh, more palatable for everyone involved. Um, Joe did, did actually meet us onsite, and that was, that was very nice to meet him. I actually put a name to the face, which was nice. Um, uh, for that, uh, do I need to access my PowerPoint from here, or is it on your guys'?
Mr. Lardy, you have the ability to share your screen, so you can pull it up on your computer.
Okay, so if I just pull it up, then I can share my screen?
Yes. And you'll click the green button at the bottom of the zoom that says share screen, and then choose the screenshot that you want to share, and that should be your presentation.
Okay, all right, can you guys see it? Oh, share screen.
Here's the picture, or the actual screen you want, so.
So do we see the annexation and rezone for proposed Teakwood subdivision? Blue screen?
Not yet.
Not yet, okay. Let's see here. Apologize.
Mr. Lardy, did you press the green share screen button at the bottom of the zoom window?
Uh, no, I have not. Let's see. Hosted handy.
If you hover over the bottom of the zoom window, there should be a green share screen icon right in the middle. There you go.
Are we there? All right. Sorry about that. Uh, so I won't restate the, the staff report. Uh, I'll try and just hit a few of the highlights. Uh, it, so we reduce the density at, uh, apologize. So the density was reduced, and so now we're down at 4.23 dwelling units per acre. Uh, it's, it meets the future land use representation of medium density, R8. So it's located on the south, on the southeast corner. Here is the outlined property. You've seen that in the staff report. So in, in this, in this slide, uh, we see, whoops, too far, sorry. So here we see the, the fact that, uh, there are no sidewalks adjacent to the, adjacent to the site. So a property due west doesn't, is actually, I believe is an enclave. There are no sidewalks in front of it, and there, there's no sidewalk in front of this portion of Sage Wood or Sage Land. It does have a detached, uh, pathway, and it meanders back and forth and actually feeds everybody back into their subdivision. And then to the east, we have, uh, we have irrigation property, which owns this, this access to their, to their path or to their, uh, so they can service the, the canal. And then there's no, there's no other pathway or sidewalk to our east. Uh, there is a sidewalk across the street on the north side of Victory. With, with this, uh, and that's one of the reasons why we're asking for us not to, to build the detached sidewalk along Victory, which would just create the fact that people would go out there and attempt to cross the, across the road here and possibly creating a, a public nuisance or a public safety hazard, which is, which is problematic. The Richardsons, who live in, who live in the existing home, they've lived there since the nineties, and they watched the ground develop, and they're just trying to exercise their private property rights in order to get to where they need to be or, uh, to, to develop their ground and get, or utilize their home, stay in their home without being uprooted, and then still not have to care for the 7.35 acres of their home. Uh, they've, they've gotten used to the traffic out on, out on Victory Road. They're used to going out there. They've watched it develop around, and they've dealt with it. So the traffic isn't a problem for the homeowner, which is the reason why we're asking for the existing driveway access to remain. They also still have some large vehicles, including a goose neck trailer, that they'd still like to be able to access off of Victory in order to get into their, into their site, which they don't have quite the same access as coming in off of East Fathom. Uh, the city's, uh, let's see. Apologize. So currently, Victory Road is actually, is actually at its full width across our frontage. It's built out to its full width as far as three lanes, and it does have existing curb gutter. Uh, it's only missing the detached sidewalk. There are, there are some mature trees in this location, which I'll show you later. Uh, and then there are some large irrigation boxes that run along Victory Road, which are problematic to, to be relocated. They, they can be, but, uh, that's the only, that's the reason why we're not asking or why we're requesting not to build a detached sidewalk. One, it's a sidewalk to nowhere, and two, there are a lot of, uh, obstructions that could possibly wait to, to be developed when the area around, and it's more conducive to develop those particular items. So the access and its future condemnation, the detached sidewalk, could be addressed in a development agreement, uh, and noted on the plat, which my client is willing to do, that it could be done, those things could be provided for at a later date when the Richardson's leave their home or that lot to Block 2 develops. So this is a, this slide is a development as a whole. You've seen this one. Uh, the eastern stub, uh, is, is a common lot. It's intended to be a common lot in the future, even when this cul-de-sac decides to, uh, or can be abandoned, it will remain as open space, which will provide, which could provide a, a segue into open space into the future development of this property. Um, when it's, when it gets, when it gets abandoned. So we moved the large open space to the cul-de-sac to allow for safe play and, and additional parking around the cul-de-sac, which was achieved by a larger cul-de-sac. This area can be accessed through the internal sidewalks of the, of the project, which are requirement, and can get you there safely. Uh, the green space, uh, let's see. The open space on Lot 7 provides a respite, a buffer to the homeowners, a respite stop area that might be more serene for, uh, someone to use versus the large play area in the back, which may have a large gathering or such. Uh, the green space around the curve, which helps buffer Lot 2, Block 2 from the subdivision and allows or prevents double-fronted access. If they, which, being that we're asking for the existing access out to Victory to remain, uh, we don't want them to take access off of Fathom until this lot redevelops. So the next slide is, uh, open space summary. You've seen this. Uh, it's, it's the same thing that, that Joe had shown. And, uh, a picnic table was proposed, meeting UDC requirements, both in, uh, in the large open space and in the small pocket space on Lot 7, uh, and at the end of the cul-de-sac. This is a blow-up area of the cul-de-sac. So, uh, last time I was before you, Commissioner Holland had stated that she would like to see some way to handle some parking, because this is an issue that the city faces constantly, is, uh, parking jammed up in the cul-de-sac. Originally, we had tried part, putting a parking island in the middle, and we submitted that to the fire department. The fire department came back and said, no, they wouldn't allow anything in the middle. They suggested a larger, a larger cul-de-sac to provide, uh, access or, or parking around the side, uh, or along the outside, and then still providing their safe access and turnaround in the middle. So here, this is a, a photograph of Victory Road, and it, and then this is looking east towards our site. Those large evergreens are on our site that you see off to the, to the left or to the right, excuse me. There's a large irrigation structure there that I had mentioned earlier, which is one of the drawbacks of, or not drawbacks, but one of the deterrents for, of providing that More, more photographs of the, the existing mature trees. Again, this is the existing mature trees looking, looking westward. These power poles also exist in the, in the, within that same area where we're trying to put that sidewalk. And this is, uh, our property, the subject property, and then the slope down from the existing Victory Road. It, uh, it's, comes right off the curb, it's a foot flat, and then it starts dropping into our site. And there's a large irrigation structure here, which is another deterrent for putting that, uh, or installing that existing sidewalk. Or not existing sidewalk, the proposed detached sidewalk. Pardon me. Another picture of the same boss area. I won't, I won't worry with the same thing. And then this is the sidewalk across the road, this on the north side of Victory. And this actually attaches to the, the city's multi-use pathway to the east along the Eight Mile Lateral, which to our side, on our side, doesn't exist, uh, and probably won't exist for quite some time due to the neighboring developments or neighbors', uh, neighbor, neighboring landowners. Um, so some modifications to the staff report, or at least trying to make, make, uh, if we apply for a waiver on those, I don't want to be held up by some of the staff report modifications, portions, uh, 8A1F, all, all dealing with the access to, um, Victory and the supplication or, excuse me, the construction of the, the detached sidewalk. And I believe that's, uh, 8A1F, and then 82, 8A2B, uh, and that has to do with access to Victory, uh, Victory Road. We'd like to, we'd like that to say that it's subject to a development agreement and that, uh, Lot 2, Block 2 is allowed access and, and, uh, 83F. That includes, that, that is concerning the frontage improvements along Victory Road also being made, uh, subject to a development agreement. With that, I will stand for any questions. Thank you.
Sorry, I appreciate it. One quick question for you. Uh, so the amenity, just to be clear, is the two picnic tables? Is that correct?
Yes, meaning UDC requirements. I believe there's a shelter structure or some shade structure, whether that be some trees or a, an actual structure. We'll meet the code on those.
Okay. And then the second question is, how much of that chunk in the back of the south side open space are you using for drainage? Uh, 'cause I, being that the water table is as high as it is, it seems to be out there. Um, I, 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 you and I both know that we've seen big open spaces turn into marshes real fast. So what are, I mean, I, usable open space for the neighborhood versus a, uh, you know, a swale? Uh, give me your thoughts there.
Uh, we have not done a, we have not done a preliminary calc on that. Uh, I was hoping to go underground and use a, a side, a side sand filter, so it would infiltrate into one, or would go into one side, be cleaned, and then transfer over the other side and percolate in, which is usable for shallow groundwater. You have something like that up on, uh, uh, the storage units on McMillan and, oh, I'm, I can't think of the side street. Uh, I believe it's near Goddard Creek. Something similar to that situation or to that, uh, system to function here, which should allow most of that space to be usable above surface and below surface for drainage, without making a marsh out of it.
Uh, additional questions for the applicant? Anyone thoughts? Um, I'll ask one more, what you guys are discussing, thinking about it. Uh, Dan, what about, uh, that, um, the- Uh, Dan, what about uh, that on the the, I guess it's the. Cul-de-sac that's the turnaround for the uh, fire trucks. Like, how do you calculate in that that common space or the open space behind that? Is that part of your calculation? Is it not? Just to clear clarify that.
Mr. Commissioner, it is in our open space. It is not qualified in our opens. It's not qualified open space.
Okay. And then in regards to taking access, is there a real reason? I understand they just have ease of use and for their trailer, but I. Kind of when you develop, you develop, right? So if. I understand that ACHD will give me a waiver here, but it seems that it's really easy to access that back road. Uh, from their property. Give me the the real reason besides the trailer. Um, to close that access off.
Uh, Mr. Commissioner, uh, or excuse me, Mr. Chair. The uh, on the site plan, if we can, if we can go back to the site plan real quick. Let's see. So in order to, if we were to access off of uh. Off of Victory to get the goose necked and they actually take, they actually take access off of here. They have an agreement with uh. The irrigation district to provide this access. And they utilize this extra access to get back and around into their. In into their uh, larger area where they bring the trailer in. Uh, again, it's just that they're very used to this access, then they didn't want to have to take access through. And I know the neighbors are already complaining about twenty-two or twenty-one homes. Uh, if they start bringing their goose neck through here, well, of course. I don't believe that they can get the goose neck in through off of Fathom and then around to their shop back here. Uh, at one point in time, we had talked about putting an easement here and that just wasn't working for them because they didn't have to drag that all the way through. It was easier for them to keep their access off of Victory and that's really the only reason. The the neighboring property. Uh, and part of the problem with with some of the thoughts or suggestions was the property to the to the west of this was allowed to keep their access. Uh, off of Victory. And I know we mentioned this to Joe and Joe Joe was very right. He said, you know, two wrongs don't make a right. And so and we agree. But the Richardson's are very used to this access. Um. And they they needed to to actually access this building in the rear.
Okay. Any additional questions for the applicant? Mr. Cassinelli or Commissioner Grove?
Mr. Chair.
Go right ahead, sir.
Um, so I have a question for you regarding um, the the future plans for the site. Um, and how it relates to um, it being laid out now. Um, in terms of. When the owner of the residence decides to have their current house developed. Um, how does that impact uh, this current layout in terms of making it doable um, by extending Fathom and and. It I'm just having a hard time seeing how that. It looks like we might have future problems is what I'm trying to get at, I guess. Um, so what's the plan?
Uh, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Grove. Um, so future development of this lot, uh. I'd had to leave it to the future development, but I I believe that you could pull a common drive off of Fathom. And supply, I believe, six, six lots back that way and still provide a uh, and then do away with the access off of Victory.
Grove, do you have a follow up?
Um, not necessarily. Just kind of thinking out loud. I don't, I think the common drive is maxed out at four. Um. Is that? That might be a question for staff, but and that's a future question, but I'm just having a hard time with this layout, knowing that something else will have to happen at some point. So.
Commissioner Grove. Or Mr. Chair. This is. The max in our code is actually six off of a common drive. How a common drive would work here, the staff does question exactly where they would pull that off of. Cause they couldn't be off of that uh, emergency access unless there's an easement across it. So just wanted to clarify that.
Mr. Grove, that help? Yeah. Uh, any additional questions for the applicant at this time?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Cassinelli.
Um.
Dan, what did the fire department? Uh, I've I've got gets several concerns with this and one of one of which is. The uh, the the what came up before is parking on the cul-de-sac. Fire department, you said the fire department said you couldn't put a parking island in there. What was their, what was their reasoning on that? Did they want it even larger to be able to do that or or what?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Cassinelli. Uh, when I spoke with the the assistant chief, the fire chief, he said that he wouldn't allow anything in the middle. Of that cul-de-sac, no matter its size. And I stated the fact that there are some of these that already exist. We actually had elongated the cul-de-sac and widened it. And uh, provided that parking in the middle and I sent that over to the fire department. He just absolutely said, no.
He didn't give you anything if it was. Another ten feet wider, he would allow it. He just it was a flat out denial.
If it uh, it was a flat out denial and his suggestion was to make the cul-de-sac larger of fifty-seven foot. And that way he could have his turnaround, his safe turning distance inside of that.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Cassinelli, you have any additional? Did you have an additional question?
Um. Not right now.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Seal? Oh, Joe, go right ahead.
No, the other guy in here. Um, the, from my understanding of Mr. Bonjorno. Um, had said that it doesn't meet fire code. He did not state what fire code that is, but he said it does not meet fire code to have. Parking in the center of the cul-de-sac.
Okay. Thank you for that. Um, if there are no additional questions at this time. Uh. Mr. Lordy, we'll get back to you and let you close after we take public testimony. If that works, sir.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Um, Madam Clerk, do we have folks that would like to testify or sign up to testify?
Mr. Chair, we have several people signed up, uh, two of which have. Uh, exhibited a wish to testify. The first is Pat Thacker joining us via Zoom. Pat, you should have the ability to unmute yourself.
Okay, did that do it?
Yep, Mr. Thacker, welcome to the to the commission. Please state your name and your address for the record and the four years, sir.
Uh, Pat Thacker, ten thirty-three West Newfield Drive, Eagle, Idaho. I represent the landowners. Um, we are very in favor of the plat as proposed. Um, we have worked for about fifteen months now with the developer very hard. Um, Joe was gracious enough to meet us on site to uh. A picture's worth a thousand words. And when you meet on site, you kind of get a a reality check on how these things need to work. Um, but we're very much in favor of the way it's proposed. Um, and I would like to address a couple of issues. Um. One would be the sidewalk on Victory Road. Uh, in our conversations with ACHD, um. They are gonna do some uh, future developments to the intersection of Locust Grove and Victory Road. And uh, they're 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 very fine with us keeping our driveway, the entrance onto Victory Road. And when they uh, finish the intersection at Locust Grove and Victory. At that time, they are proposing that they will complete the sidewalks. Uh, and at that, and they have, when they did the bridge a few years ago. They did a small taking of property uh, for a bitter easement in front of the Richardson's property. And so. I think it would be logical plus much safer for the public if ACHD continued those sidewalks at that time. Um, at this time, if you go there and stand on it, traffic gets rolling pretty fast by the time it gets in front of this property here in the bridge. And it would really be a dangerous spot if we had children or cyclists and stuff trying to cross the road there as opposed to. Crosswalks that are over at Victory and Locust Grove right now. Um, the buffer in front of there is a a virtual forest of blue spruce, et cetera. So it's really a nice buffer for the subdivision. Um, another issue I bring up is that um, this does create a second emergency access. Uh, the one that's proposed for Teakwood also gives a second one for trade winds. So that doubles the amount of emergency access for trade winds, which I think is a great benefit to the public. Uh, and another thing is uh, as far as them keeping their access. Uh, they do uh, still have a couple of old horses that they would like to keep. And part of the property that is going to be a budding, the subdivision is where their small pasture will be so they can finish up. Uh, keeping those horses, which have been part of their family for decades. Um, and then they do have an agreement with the irrigation district. And that's where they come in with their trucks and trailers and they use that shop out back. So taking their access off of Fathom. Would be difficult if you haul trailers very much, you would see it. It would be pretty hard. And it would take away any opportunity for them to continue to use their shop and their pastures. Um, so those would really be uh, difficult for them. Um, and then the open space, they have given up about twenty-five percent of what they had uh, wanted to keep. In order to help the developer meet the open space requirements. Um, and where those open spaces are, I think are are really quite nice for uh. People in both subdivisions to use and it creates more walking space. Um, and then on the back of that pasture, since I'm familiar with the land, I've known the the owners for about thirty years. Um, on the open space to the south, there is already um, on the very southern edge. I believe that's where some of the irrigation currently travels through. Uh, there's a very low spot at very, very uh, south edge. And so I think that uh, the proposed drainage that. Uh, Mr. Lardy was proposing, I think would work quite well. I think the majority of that would be very usable open space. Other, is there any questions?
I, so I have, do have one question. So you just said something that caught my attention. So you that. They are currently using the access that the ditch rider has, not their own access to get that trailer out. So they don't need their main access to get their trailer out if it's the shops in the back and they're already using the ditch rider's road. What's the reason to have the additional road access? Do you have two right there?
Well, you you couldn't get to their house from that backside. They they that driveway goes right into their house and into their shop out front. And so they wouldn't have any way to get in there. Um, cause that all.
I understand that piece, but the argument is that that you can't get the goose neck trailer out through the neighborhood. And if they're using the ditch riders road, uh, then that. In my mind, negates that argument, uh, cause it's if they're accessing the shop through that road. Um, off to the north or I'm sorry, out to the east. They're not accessing the, they're accessing their their house through the off access off of Victory, but not to their shop. Correct?
That that's correct.
Okay, just want to make sure I'm clear.
Yeah, but I I I don't understand how that negates.
Cause the the access can, I mean, if they're, they can take that road right onto Fathom.
Uh, take, take which road right onto Fathom?
Their 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 driveway. Instead of accessing Victory, they can spin a. Uh, a road right onto Fathom and access their house.
If that would go right through their shop, it would go right through their uh, pump house. They wouldn't be able to get to their house that way.
Uh, they're addition, okay, I appreciate that.
They've got a garage and a and a pump house and what have you back there.
Okay.
Then the shops on the other end. So the the way the property is laid out, I they I they wouldn't be able to do that.
Okay. From the la- the layout that's in front of us right now, there looks to be quite a bit of room around that house. I I just I'm. Just walking through the different components of this thing. Cause we've seen this thing. I think this is the third time and. I I I'm having concerns like where where we we go to develop. Um, we kind of got to either jump in or not. And so I understand the need to keep the house and the want to keep the house. Um, and so I'm I'm just having some challenges, um, finding the the balance, if you will. So. But I'll let my, I'll hop out of the mix and let my other commissioners uh, comment or ask questions if they have them. Are there additional questions for Mr. Thacker? Okay, sir, thank you very much for your time. Thanks for being here tonight.
Thank you very much.
Madam Clerk, who do we have next?
Mr. Chair, that would be Sandy Blazer joining us in person.
Madam, uh, Ms. Blazer, I think the clerk is waiting for you in the other room, so. Hopefully be joining us in a second.
Uh, this is Sandy Blazer. Uh, my residence is thirty-three seventy South Como Avenue. In Meridian, we're on the, just on the, where the house is abutting the development to the east. Um. I guess I can't get my head around the way ACHD interlocks different subdivisions. I mean, I'm looking at this property. And I'm looking at it. From the standpoint that each subdivision should be self, if I mean, should be, should have its own access. And not depend on another subdivision because we've got forty, forty-one homes there that are going to be impacted by another twenty-two. Plus homes. And if that other lot is developed, maybe five or six more and it's. Going to substantially change the the traffic. And in our opinion, most of the homeowners, the quality of life there. Also, um, as I'm sure you're aware, uh, Lo- of. Locust Grove is a north-south street. And I think the load on the traffic load on Locust Grove right now. Exceeds the east-west traffic load on on Victory. And um, I just looking at this property, I just can't see why we can't accommodate. Uh, this road to go through directly to Victory. I know ACHD is saying Victory is a major arterial. Well, I think Locust Grove is also a major arterial. And the other, the other situation is emergency services having to go. Having to go Victory, then having to make a go south on Locust Grove and then to go. East into our entrance on coastline and then to go through over to Fathom and then back to that. To the development. It's just going to take more time for emergency services to get to a situation. So I just think as as one of the homeowners, just a bad, a bad plan. And uh, most of the homeowners again are are against the traffic load being increased at trade winds. And the other concern I have, which I've already stated before, is that. Although we can't force the developer to do this, but to try to balance the homes that are going to be constructed. Uh, right adjacent to our homes on the west that basically we don't have. Higher elevation homes facing lower elevation homes on Como. If they could mix that. Properly so it it looks sort of continuous as far as the heights of the various structures, that would be appreciated. And that's, that's really all I have. And I thank you for considering my testimony.
Really appreciate being here tonight. Um, any questions for Mr. Blazer? Okay. Thank you so much, sir.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, do we have additional testimony, testimony?
Mr. Chair, that's all who signed up.
Okay, if there's anyone who would like to testify in this application that is either uh, virtually or in the audience. Uh, please raise your hand either via Zoom or um, in person and Commissioner Seal or the clerk will. Point you out and we'll get you in squared away. Nope. Not seeing anyone raise their hand on the attendees for this this year. Okay, uh, Mr. Lardy, would you like to come back up and join us, sir? Or join us virtually, I guess that would be.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I I'm here.
Uh, would you like to close? There are any additional comments and I will open it for questions.
Uh. Uh, additional comments. So Mr. Blazers, Mr. Blazers' concerns about traffic, I I understand his concerns. Um. I'm not sure what to tell him about traffic concerns and ACHD is the is the controlling factor on. I'm not sure what to tell him about traffic concerns. And ACHD is, is the controlling factor on ACH in the city, control how we access our property. So I don't have anything else more to say to him about, at least traffic. I can't help that. The home sites, you know, we've, we've proposed homes. We've provided elevations on those and they're mostly single stories with maybe a buffer or a bonus room above, which will be like one and a half stories. But they all meet, they'll all meet the zoning ordinance as far as height. With that, I can stand for questions, Mr. Chair.
Dan, would you be willing to match their, their lots a lot? You know, one story to one story?
Mr. Chair, I don't know that I can commit to that. You know, it's zoned a certain way and the zoning has their own height restrictions and I'm, I'm willing to comply with those or state that will comply with those.
Okay. Appreciate that. Additional questions for the applicants? Are you done?
Mr. Chair, I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
So I know, I know we've already talked about this a little bit, but one of my biggest heartburns looking at this is again, the open space. Having the piece on the south be kind of a drainage field slash open space, but just the ability to have usable open space for those in there. Was there any other configuration we could look at on how to combine those two patches of open space to make it more usable for for the neighborhood and make kind of a bigger green spot? I still keep going back to that and I just wanted to get your thoughts on it.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Holland, there is a chance that we could possibly swap some for some. There is a chance that we could look at that and try and, and maybe utilize a little bit of space in Lot 18 and Lot, maybe Lot 15. That way it's at least contiguous across. So let me see if I can grab my, can you guys see my pointer? Probably not.
I don't think we can.
Okay. So Lot 19 there is, oh.
Now we can. Yep, we're with you.
Okay. So, and this is kind of what Joe had suggested was Lot, Lot 19 and maybe creating a pathway through on Lot 19 and maybe squaring this lot. And then trading Lot 7 for Lot 15. Then this becomes open, Lot 19 becomes open space connected to Lot 15. And then that way at least provides a pathway from future when, when the roundabout, or excuse me, the turnaround gets gets abandoned or even, even still, it provides a pathway to, from one road to the other, aside from the sidewalk. But then Lot 7 would become a buildable lot.
Okay. And then one follow-up question. I apologize if I missed this. Did you already talk about an amenity, a side of many that you could add into the open space?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Holland, so if we were to reconfigure this open space, we would provide a pathway from one road to the other that would, that would count as an amenity. But then we would also, what we're currently proposing is a picnic table on both open space areas. Along, meeting the UDC code, which if that means it just needs a shelter or some additional trees for shade, we would do that.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Additional questions for the applicants?
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Cassinelli?
Dan, did you guys ever provide a some concepts for, for the additional development of the, the existing home there and what that might look like?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Cassinelli, we did at one point in time have that lotted out for a future phase and everyone was against the phased development. So we took it off.
Not phased, but just future, you know, once that house is sold, becomes part of this, you, you mentioned, I think, four or five lots.
That would be phased development in my, in my opinion. And we did show that as lotted as, as, as future phase, which would be when that lot became available. And it was, it was frowned upon from both staff and from the commission. Well, I don't know about the commission. I won't put words in your mouth, but it was frowned upon from staff.
Joe, can you speak to that?
Commissioner Cassinelli, Mr. Chair, yes. That is correct. Originally, they did show some phasing, this one, here you go. This is what they did have. Staff was not supportive of phasing it, mostly because of the request to keep the access to Victory and not do any frontage improvements. We were showing a concept plan of how this large lot with the existing home could redevelop is perfectly fine. They, I'm sure Dan can make that exhibit relatively with ease for his expertise. But in general, phasing the project was not something I was in support of because I wanted to ensure that the, as much of the site got developed now rather than later. Because there's no guarantee we will get that existing home. Part of that Phase 2 was, again, keeping that access to Victory and we wanted to make sure that we had that now closed.
Questions?
Okay.
Mr. Cassinelli, do you have follow-up?
For, for Joe when we're done with the applicant.
Okay, perfect. Additional questions for the applicant? With that, can I get a motion to close the public hearing?
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Seal?
Move that we close the public hearing for Teakwood Place subdivision, file number H2020-0006.
Second.
I have a motion. Oh, yes, ma'am.
I apologize. We have a newcomer in the audience online that was very handbraced. Don't know how you want to handle that.
Let's bring them on and then we'll let Mr. Lardy respond if he needs to.
Tony, you should have the ability to unmute yourself.
Yeah. Madam Clerk, Tony can verify, but I believe he's speaking on another application this evening.
Oh, okay. Perfect. So I have, I have a motion. Do you want to restate that motion, please? Motion maker?
Move to close the public hearing for Teakwood Place subdivision, file number H2020-0006.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, to close the public hearing on H2020-006. Teakwood Place subdivision, all who are in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay. The application is properly before you all. Anybody want to kick it off?
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Cassinelli?
I had a couple of questions for Joe. First of all, access from the, I can't see the name of the street that goes the sub-street to the east. But assuming that property develops to the east, and that's the, that's the big if is, I mean, that could be beyond our lifetimes. I mean, or it could be in five years. I guess it's Richardson Street. Who would be responsible? Would it be the, because I think the, the property adjacent has the lateral running through it, so it would be that, it would be their responsibility to bridge that. Because, and would that be a requirement to eventually have access, cross-access, go out Richardson and then assuming to a mid-mile connector or something up to Victory? Is that, can I make that assumption?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Cassinelli, yes, that is correct. It would be up to the HOA at the time after this is developed to remove that temporary turnaround off of Lot 19. And then the subdivision, if there were one, the property to the east would then redevelop and likely construct their portion of the pathway along the lateral as well as extend that street within their subdivision and continue that on through the site and stub it to Mrs. DeChambeau's property, which is further to the east on the other side of the lateral.
Would that be a requirement of any future development directly to the east, that that Richardson be extended all the way so that there would be full cross-access and, and a, and basically access to Victory out that direction? Or would we find ourselves with that being, somehow being closed off forever?
Commissioner Cassinelli, the short answer is yes. That is a standard requirement that we want a local street plan, infrastructure layout, for lack of a better term, to connect and then eventually get to a mid-mile mark. However, the site directly abutting this to the east is landlocked somewhat by the lateral. So their only access is over the lateral. If that property were to redevelop, it would be, it would then be stubbed to the property to its east and north, which is Mrs. DeChambeau's, which is a larger property. But until such time that that property develops, there would not be an access out to Victory.
Commissioner Cassinelli?
Go right ahead. Commissioner Holland?
I was just going to make a comment. I believe we heard from that property owner directly to the east last time. We heard this application, I think Commissioner Cassinelli was absent, but they had indicated that they didn't have a a desire to redevelop at any time in the near future and they planned to stay where they were. So it's unlikely we would see something come through in the near future, at least.
I was, I remember this, but I don't remember the, I don't recall that, that neighbor's testimony on that.
And that's certainly a concern to me, that that could be, Richardson could, could not have cross-access for what could be a very long time.
Additional comments? Commissioner Holland, does you have anything additional? Well, you're off mute.
Sure. I think, I can go next. You know, the, the open space, I agreed with staff that it, it's, it's okay, it meets the minimum standards, but it's not premier. And I think we try really hard to make sure that we prioritize open space in, in all of the subdivisions that come through. And if we're not doing a good job of being premier, I'm wondering if there's still something that they could do to make it a little bit better before it goes to council. And I was open to the applicant's idea of, of reconfiguring the green space to be kind of between that cul-de-sac and that the other stub road and be a little bit more central and a little bit more usable. Having a pathway to me doesn't seem like enough of an amenity because it's such a short distance through there. I think I would at least want to see a picnic table and a shade structure there at a minimum in addition to their pathway. I struggle with the roadway improvements on Victory. I understand what the applicant's saying on why that's difficult until that property redevelops. But at the same time, we don't get sidewalks on major roads until things like this come through. So if we were to allow them to wait to do that, I would want to see some sort of condition that said they could wait till redevelopment or until one of the neighboring properties to the east or west of them redeveloped at some point in the future and put in sidewalks and maybe have that be part of a development agreement. And I'm not sure if that's even possible, but that's one thought I had. Let's see, what else did I have?
Only comment to that, Commissioner Holland, is if that's the case, then I would probably look for a bond for it. Because if, if they're going to ask, like, that's my concern, is we never get another shot at this deal.
Right. I agree.
And Victory's going to be a busy place. Yeah.
I think it would be reasonable to ask them to have it in the development agreement and bond for the future improvements so that they could move forward on it when the neighboring property comes in and does sidewalks on there. The, the third thing I wanted to say is I still would prefer to also see access off of Victory removed and have them access the, the neighborhood. It, it's a little cleaner because there's not a lot of opportunities to redo that again in the future either. Those are my three comments right now.
Mr. Chair?
Go right ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Holland, just wanted to clarify that the pathway, they're not proposing a pathway with this, it's just an easement. So that is not an amenity. And I believe Mr. Lardy said that their amenities that they are proposing are a couple picnic tables. I did not see that on any of the landscape plans, so that's, I appreciate him presenting that tonight, though.
Yeah. And Joe, just to clarify, when he was talking about reconfiguring the open space and moving it a little more central, I asked what amenity could be in there. And he said, if they put it more central, they would have a pathway that would connect the two areas. The cul-de-sac basically to that stub street and that could be counted as an amenity. And I, I would agree with you that that doesn't seem like enough of an amenity to me. Unless I misunderstood what you're saying.
Additional comments?
Chair?
Yeah, go ahead, Commissioner Seal.
I really struggle with this one, so I, I understand what the occupants are trying to do. I guess the problem that I have with it is they're, they want to keep everything. They're not willing to, to, you know, they, they don't want to do anything that is essentially required by code. But at the same time, they want, you know, the commission or the, you know, the planning bodies to, you know, to kind of work around all of that. So I, I mean, to me, this, you know, to use the term, it's, they're trying to be a little bit pregnant here. So I, I just don't, I, I don't understand, you know, the, the layout as it exists. I mean, the, the answer to this is to develop all of it. So in, in my mind, you know, I, I sympathize for the, for the couple that are trying to stay there, but I mean, at this point, the, the open space is, you know, again, it's just big grassy areas and, and a water catch. I mean, in order to make the emergency access count as open space, they added, you know, shrubbery and things like that. So that's another expense that the subdivision is going to have to deal with, you know. It, it doesn't help them, doesn't beautify their space, but you know, it counts as open space. So you know, that's another expense that they're going to have to deal with. You know, I, I mean, basically, I agree with everything that the staff report says and has to offer with the exception that I, I wouldn't approve this. I, I just don't think it fits and I, I think that it's, you know, it, it needs to all develop or not develop at all.
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Grove?
I can echo some of that. I have, I don't know that I've seen this before. So this is new to me, or at least if it was not new to me, it feels new to me. But I'm just struggling with it. It feels forced and it feels like we're going to have problems down the road with it developing after the fact. I don't like the access off Victory. I think if we do move forward, that driveway does need to go in. Especially after, you know, hearing the back and forth that you had, Mr. Chair, with Mr. Thacker on the, the trailer situation and whatnot. It also feels like that we're just hitting the bare minimums on absolutely everything for this project. And it doesn't feel, you know, if we don't add in certain pieces like the sidewalks or removing access, it feels like we're not extending the urban and suburban fabric of our community. And we're just kind of popping in houses without strategy almost. And I don't, I mean, I don't know. I'm, I have a really hard time with this one. I don't quite see it yet.
Commissioner Grove? Mr. McCarville?
Yeah, I've, I've got notes written all over here that pretty much echo what's been going on. And I know it is, the subdivision will access the subdivision to the west. So there's just, there's no doubt about it. And I, I see in the future where it won't have any access to Victory, that it will have to depend on obviously the, whatever developed- And I I see in the future where it won't have any access to Victory that it will have to depend on, obviously, the uh sub whatever develops in the future to the east. Um, and I agree, I've got comments written here, you know, they want minute, they wanna just barely meet minimum code on everything, but then they wanna, they're gonna turn around and when, when and if that other piece of land where the original house sits gets developed, then they wanna use the maximum of the six lots on a common driveway. I mean, it just, I agree, it's just either all, it's just that piece of land that either just all needs to get developed or not because it is just in between other things and I agree. It make, I don't like having, leaving that access off of Victory. I mean, I can kinda see where it makes sense to um leave some of that frontage improvement until either the time that Locust Grove and Victory gets improved or the neighbors develop. Um, because I know that that irrigation situation out there and just the way that land sits is probably difficult to even envision having a sidewalk on it. But um, but yeah, the money would have to, I just, I think it's just not the right time. I mean, you you can't have your cake and eat it too. That's kinda where I'm at with it. Um, because the way it's been chopped up and open space here and there, I just think it could be, it, it's in-between stuff anyway and it's gonna be hard to connect with everything. But trying to keep the original house and all that property there is making the design that much harder and that much more chopped up. I just, I don't.
I'm in agreement with what you just outlined. I think um we always, we try to do the best we can. I think my, there's two big concerns I have. One is that big open space is gonna be used as a drainage well and or a drainage bed. And we've seen where we've attempted to, the technology's getting better about the transitioning of water under underground. Um, but based on the pictures we saw from the public, um, there's a high water table out there. I think the test pits on the um the report they got back where the water table's pretty high. Um, that's gonna be unusable space. Um, so the the common area becomes not functional. Um, and then we're uh, we have limited access to go to public parks that are across the street, those kinds of things. I I just think we're we're shoehorning this thing in here. And I understand, I agree with Commissioner Seal's comment about being a little bit pregnant. I I understand and I totally sympathize with the landowner about wanting to do the development in the back and and maintain their life in the front, which I understand that. But kinda gotta, when you develop, you kinda gotta jump in and do it. Um, and so you gotta choose. And and if they're, they wanna do the development, that's great, but um we need to have a different tact in taking it on. Um, and so I'm just, I I'm having trouble as well. Commissioner Castanelli, did you have thoughts, sir?
Uh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna echo a lot of these thoughts. I I think there's just, I got a question, Joe, would, um, given that to the south is R4, um, does this fit under, uh, if this were to develop as R4, would that be uh, uh, would that be uh within the uh future, the comp plan, future land use map designation? And then maybe, and and my thought there is that maybe some of these concerns, if if this were developed as an R4, maybe, maybe it could be configured as such. Just a, just a thought there. Joe, would that, is that, is is R4 acceptable?
Commissioner Seal, um, thank you for your question, sir. It, yes and no, the zoning is not what ties it to the density. The density is low, it's on the very low end of the median density residential, so it's probably already less density than the subdivision to the south that is R4. They're just requesting R8 to make sure they uh have a couple lots that can go below the 8,000. But like I said in my staff report, it is, the average lot size is 10,000 square feet, which is over the minimum lot size for the R4. So um it, the density is the key there and they are right at the bottom at three dwellings per acre.
So they're they're um, they're almost into the R4 anyway, is that what you're saying?
Yes, sir, yeah.
Okay. Um, so I guess continuing on with my thoughts, I'm, I, one of my biggest concerns, and this is an ACHD thing, is that um we may never see access on onto Victory, which I don't get because, you know, uh, to the north of Victory there, you've got two access points um to the development to the north coming in on Victory. Why they wouldn't allow uh one to the easternmost portion uh in the future? Granted, the house is is there right now. I, I get that they wanna develop it. I I fully get the property rights, but all these concerns, that common area, the um, I, a big concern to me is the amount of is is the amount of number of homes that will take access only off of, off of one point, off of Locust Grove. And yet ACHD's report, we only get traffic counts for Victory, we get nothing from Locust Grove. I was perplexed by that. Um, I I think they could adjust the driveway and bring it in off Fathom and still take the access from uh from the irrigation districts uh from that, uh from their uh access point over there and not have to worry about that. But yeah, I've got, I've got all these concerns myself and I just don't think, I I don't think it's the right layout. I don't, not necessarily not the right time, it's just, I think the whole layout has to be just completely rethought.
Mr. Chair.
I think you're muted, Mr. Chair.
Oh, okay, additional thoughts? Um, I think we have some motions are always in order, but you guys have any thoughts additional?
Mr. Chair, this is Joe.
Joe, go right ahead.
I just wanted one last comment on the ACHD staff report, and this is also related to what Mr. Thacker had said. The ACHD staff report does state that they are requiring, or they were, one of their site conditions of approval are to construct the detached sidewalk um along Victory. So just wanted to clarify that.
So Joe, to follow up on that, he did, Mr. Thacker also mentioned that uh the, in that report or in their comments, uh work with them, they said they would be, they would construct everything when they did Victory and Locust Grove's, that would be completely done by by ACHD. Is that correct? Just make sure we're clear.
Mr. Chair, uh, that is a conversation that I was not a part of and it is not in the staff report that I am aware of. Uh, that was, I think, a sidebar discussion that I was not a part of. So I I would say that I'd know, I'm not aware that they would be constructing this when they can get it through development, as is the norm.
Got it, okay. Thank you, sir. Um, additional thoughts? Mr. McCarville.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, um, I think, you know, we've spent a lot of time on this one a couple of times. Um, I think we're unfortunate, I I'm guessing from all of the thoughts that we've heard tonight, I think we're just at the point of, about recommending denial and let city council figure, you know, take our recommendation and go from there. Because I don't think, I mean, the layout isn't going to change all that much as long as that the original house and all that property stays up front.
And I appreciate the comments about um maneuvering through the common area into the middle, but that was the feedback we gave you then the first time or the second time um that we had a conversation and we're still back to a similar layout. So I'm, I'm concerned we're going down the same road um and and not meeting the the goals we were trying to lay out and and get to. So I'm, I'm of a similar mind. Commissioner Seal, did I cut you off? Sorry, go ahead.
That's okay, I'll, I'll throw a motion out there.
Okay.
More to contribute. Um, after considering all staff applicant and public testimony, I am eager to recommend the denial of the city council of file number H2020-0006 as presented during the hearing on July 16th, 2020 for the following reasons. It does not fit well into the city's vision um for annexation of premier properties as well as, or concerning minimal and unusable space, open space, um, as well as the undeveloped property takes too much away from the developed properties.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to recommend denial of file number H2020-0006 to city council. Any additional comments?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Holland, go right ahead.
Just to put it on the record, I think um when council looks at this, if they decide to go a different route than the denial route for my recommendation, um, if they were going to consider still approving it, I would say they would need to see a a different plat with more significant open space, more centralized, that shows um at least that usability and then resolve some of these issues that we've been chatting with tonight, um, if they wanted a chance to have council look at another option there.
Thank you for that, and I agree. Uh, with that said, uh, all those in favor of recommended denial of H2020-0006, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much. Thanks, Joe, we appreciate it. Um, moving on to the next item on our agenda, which is the public hearing for Landing South, uh, file number H2020-0005. Um, and let's start with the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, this application was um before you a while back. The commission continued this project in order for the applicant to work with ACHD to facilitate a construction entrance off of Linder Road until initial occupancy and reconfigure the plans to include a pathway between lots 58 and 59 that complies with UDC standards and specifically fencing standards, possibly reduce the density or modify the design to improve parking and internal circulation and revise the east slots to more of an R4 size. So the plan there on your left is the original plat that was submitted. Um, the applicant has submitted a revised plat shown on the right that depicts two fewer buildable lots um for the commission's consideration in response to their direction at the hearing on June 4th. They plan to retain the existing 50-inch silver maple tree on the site, which will reduce their mitigation requirements to 17 inches, and that is in regard to condition uh number 3B. Uh, ACHD will allow a temporary construction entrance off of Linder Road during development of the subdivision, but not during home construction. There are two on-street parking spaces and two additional spaces at the end of each of the two common driveways for a total of six spaces in addition to those provided on individual lots in garages and parking pads. Private sidewalks are proposed to each of the lots uh from the sidewalk along Linder Road. A common lot with a pathway from Spoonbill to Linder Road is not proposed. And the lots on the east side of the development were increased to that of an R4 size, 8,000 square feet. Um, the applicant is here tonight and can respond to any questions you have on this revised plan.
Thanks, Sonia. Um, are there any questions for staff?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Grove.
Uh, Sonia, I have a question with the preliminary plat that we received this afternoon. I'm having a hard time understanding what I'm looking at. Um, could you walk me through that a little bit, um, just in terms of um lots 62, 63, 64, and 65? I don't fully understand what I'm looking at, I guess.
Um, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Grove, um commissioners, um, they're, they've reduced the plat by two lots on the east side, uh, two buildable lots. They've created uh flag lots, so the original lots, if it helps, are shown in a lighter gray color. And then the new lot lines are shown in black. So these are uh flag lots you're looking at here, and they're required to have a minimum 30 feet uh street frontage. So that is what they're proposing. Um, this is a common driveway right here for access to these two lots. Um, and then again, these are the configuration of the new lots. Um, for the record, staff's really not in support of the proposed revised plat.
Uh, follow-up question.
Yeah, go right ahead.
Follow-up. Um, what do you, I I I guess I'm just struggling. What is the piece for lot 64 that's in between 65 and 63 on the east side?
I'm not really sure, let's have the applicant answer that.
Okay.
I had the same question.
Any additional comments or questions for the staff? I think the applicants gotta walk through the uh the preliminary plat with us or for us.
Mr. Chair.
Uh, Commissioner Castanelli.
Commissioner Castanelli. Uh, Sonia, can you repeat what you said there? I think you said that staff is not in favor of the current layout, is that what you said? And if so, what are the reasons?
Yeah, the configuration of the lots are really wonky and um, yeah, prefer the former plat. If, between the two, anyway.
You have a follow-up, Bill?
Uh, no, I I was looking for more of a reason, but I guess wonky is uh.
It's good enough.
It's an official term, Bill.
Well, and you said you prefer the, you prefer the the original on the, you, we're talking about those 62, 3, 4, 5 versus the six lots that were over there, I think it was six. Okay.
Mr. Chair, Sonia or Bill, is there any chance you could use the yellow like crayon to draw the, each of the lots that are now depicted to make it clear? For Commissioner Grove, I had the same question earlier and it did help to actually see them drawn out.
Well, I can, um, I, Bill's the color, I am not, Andrea. Um, if you can see my cursor though here, I can trace the outline of the lot. Like I said, it's the black line, it's not the gray line, so um, that's that lot. Um, this is the flag for this lot that comes in. Um, this is that lot, and then right here is a flag to this back lot.
Thank you.
Commissioner Grove, did that help? But I think you're, you have a, you're, I will get the applicant to explain, but I think you're seeing an overlay with the gray behind it with the old layout, so.
Yeah, it's not the, that I couldn't see each lot, I just don't understand it, I guess, like.
I'm with you, man. I had the same question during our meeting earlier today, so.
Okay.
Um, if there are additional questions for staff, if not, while the applicant come up and explain it, so we can get a better handle, because I'm with you on that one as well.
So it's uh Jim, Jim Jewitt, uh 776 East Riverside Drive, Suite 204 Eagle, Idaho. Um, so everybody hear me okay?
Yep, go ahead, Mr. Jewitt.
Thank you. Um, so at our last uh hearing, um, there was a lot of discussion about uh changing the lots to the east to a more or R4. So I drove my engineers crazy with trying to create an R4 lot when you had such limited right-of-way frontage in which to configure. And so we had to use these series of flag lots um to maintain the minimum frontage on the public right-of-way and not use the common driveway. Um, so what you see is is the result of that. And for example, that one little panhandle that goes out to the east between, and I can't look at the lot numbers on my small screen, I'm sorry. That's just what was left over to make the one trianglish looking lot 8,000 square feet. That's all it is. This is, this is what it looks like. Um, I'm not in favor at all, and the reason we overlaid it over the old plat, it was was to illustrate how it doesn't work. Um, and I I tried every other avenue, but if I went back to the common driveways, it just made sense to stay with our original plat. Um, so we're here tonight to support our original plat and um I believe that the the staff is in the same position. Um, and, you know, my planner submitted a letter, supporting me, um, putting in support for why our original plat makes sense. And so with that, I'll stand for your questions, I'm sure you'll have many more for me.
Appreciate it. Um, Commissioner Holland, go right ahead.
So in the way that you reconfigured the new lot, I I appreciate you trying to meet our request and eliminate a couple of lots to make it fit better. But if you went back to your original plat- to your original plat and maybe, I, I mean, keep the, you've got your common drives but still reduced a couple of lots on there and reconfigured how much space they had, was that not something that was a possibility there?
And, and I'm sorry, I don't know which commissioner's talking to me, so...
Sorry, that's Commissioner Holland.
Okay, so, Commissioner Holland. Without not using the common drive, because what I took from the last hearing was to change the flow and not utilize common drives, you have to maintain frontages, and that only exception is when you use common drives. So we only have so much frontage to use. So unless we simply kept the common drives and just made the lots bigger, that would be the only other option.
Well, I think that's what my question is, too, is would you be willing to consider maybe eliminating one of those lots to make those bigger so you have less number of homes off of that common drive? I think that was our challenge before, is we just didn't like that there were 1, 2, 3 drive aisles off of that one common drive, and then there were two off of the, or three off of the other one, because there was just a lot of homes coming off of that hammerhead there. And so, if there was the ability to keep a similar configuration, but maybe eliminate one or two lots to make less homes off of those access points, it might be more favorable.
Commissioner Holland, certainly, we can reduce lots. In looking at it, I would think that the reduction would probably be off of the public street, not the common drive. The, the common drive in its configuration and trying to get to those lots to the east are going to mandate that there's three lots on it regardless of what I do. So if you lose a lot, it will most likely be up to the north along the public frontage. So I don't know how that helps anybody, and I'll give you the other side of that story, and that is, the way we configure now with the six lots, we have a similar size that we have in our existing previous phase, which was the Landing number 13. And we offered product in that phase in the high 200s to the low 300s, within a occasional home being larger into the mid 300s. And that's an affordable product in Meridian right now. If I lost a lot, I would simply average that value back into the other lots, and you would take that affordability and notch up, so you would have no more homes in the three, or low, or high twos and low threes, and you would start in the mid threes. And I just don't know if that's really what's necessarily needed in Meridian right now is to have more expensive homes. I think we need to fill that medium-income family, and that's what this lot is intended to do. So the answer to your question is yes, and all I would do is change price point, and I guess I would ask if that's really what you want us to do.
I would follow up to that, Mr. Jewitt, because I wasn't here for the original hearing for this, but to my understanding is, you have duplexes on the west side of the, of the road, whichever plat you're looking at, and then single-family homes on the east, is that correct?
That is correct.
So, I mean, we're, you're putting quite a beauty, quite a, I mean, a large amount of homes in a pretty small space. And I understand that we're trying to match price points and those kinds of things, but we also need to make sure we're being safe and, and not causing a little bit of chaos in that area. So just, just want to make sure that's on the record and everybody understands it, so...
Commissioner Fitzgerald, I believe it, who was?
Yes, sir.
Yes, to provide a diversity in housing and to provide a uniqueness along Linder Road other than the back of people's homes, we did design a duplex product that would front face off of Linder and rear access off of this interior road, which is a unique design that I think that the commission was in favor of in their original hearing. Like I said, if, if the desire of the commission is to lose a lot, and that's the recommendation that I can accept, I just want to make sure that everybody is aware that it's just a rebalance of value. And from my original submittal to the city, the staff asked me to lose a lot, which I did. So that would be a total of two lot reductions from my original proposal. You guys only saw the first lot reduction, and this would be a second lot reduction.
Additional questions for the applicant?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Castaneda, go right ahead.
Yeah, can, correct me if I'm wrong, but the last time that we looked at this, wasn't there an issue with, and I, I don't have the street name there, but wasn't there an issue with the width there and access in and out of that? Wasn't that one of the big issues we faced? And if that's correct, can you, can you address that and where we stand still with that if the street got wider?
Commissioner Castaneda, I don't believe the street width was an issue. I think that the terminology that we used in the motion was, or the recommendation was that I try to improve the flow. And I took that to mean that the, to lose the private drive, the common driveways. I don't recall discussions specific to width of the street. Our street width is a stream width, is a street that comes out of the Landing number 13, and we haven't reduced it below that, that section, which is that 33-foot back-to-back.
And maybe I'm thinking of something else. So thank you.
Mr. Chair, one more follow-up question. I read in the staff report about the sidewalk that would connect over to the main road, because we'd asked for seeing some sort of sidewalk or pathway that would connect between the homes, and it didn't meet pathway requirements, but there was going to be some sort of private sidewalk. Can you just expand on that for us?
Certainly, Commissioner Holland. At the first hearing, there was discussion of making a little bit more interconnectivity to the, the Linder Road from the cul-de-sac, and we had talked about potentially putting a pathway between the lower two duplexes and the upper two duplexes. Sonia pointed out that had to meet the pathway standards if we put any pathway at all. We looked at that, and it reduced the lots too greatly that we would end up losing one entire lot. So we opted just to keep that private, our connectivity from the sidewalk to the front, private amongst those duplex and their lots, not making it public. Where still the public pathway exists along the canal, the Kennedy, which I built in the first phase, or in the Landing number 13, just in the north of the subdivision, interconnectivity to Linder still exists there, second public pathway within 100-and-so feet of the other one. And to have, lose a lot for that didn't seem appropriate.
So that, just to clarify, that private, private sidewalk, is that still something people could use if they were living in this subdivision and wanted to walk to Linder Road?
Certainly, if they, and most specifically, it's for anybody that's at the cul-de-sac that wants to reach the front door of any of those duplexes, that's, that's their way of accessing to there. So certainly anybody else would be able to use it as well. It just wouldn't be meeting the public standards or a pathway in open space, which we didn't need the additional open space. And since we couldn't encroach anymore on the open space that we had to our north, originally I thought I could squeeze up to the north, but I can't. I don't have the sufficient room to do that, to create that additional path.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair. Yeah, Commissioner Grove, go right ahead.
Jim, a question for you on this. Where do we sit with the trash receptacle situation for this project? At one point, it was said that there was going to be like a centralized, is that still the plan in, or where do we, which direction are we going in there?
Commissioner Grove, yes, staff raised the question of trash early on in our planning process, and we had offered to put a centralized trash receptacle, a dumpster in a dumpster containers, I don't know what do we call them now, where we have the fence and, instead of having individual trash receptacles. And that seemed to solve that issue, and I believe that is in the staff report, that we will put a centralized facility for the trash instead of the individual cans. And the general location, the general location of that will be between the northerly two duplex and the southerly duplex, two duplexes right along the public right-of-way is where we would locate that. Again, that was conflicting the pathway that we were putting into, is where we posed with that, that trash receptacle.
Sonia, can you verify that that's in the staff report? Because I'm thinking through it, I don't recall off the top of my head. Sonia?
I'm sorry, Chair, could you repeat the question?
Can you verify that we have a requirement in the staff report for a trash receptacle and its location, just I, I'm blanking on the fact that if it's in there or not? A centralized trash receptacle?
Trash enclosure rather than private ones?
Yes, ma'am.
No, there is not one.
Okay. Would the staff be amenable to that?
I thought you were asking the applicant if he was amenable to that. Yes, that's an option, if you'd like it to be.
Okay.
Although I'm not sure where they put it exactly.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Seal.
Just, just a, I mean, if, if that's something that we condition in here, I mean, the trash enclosure itself has, has to be able to fit, I don't know, with that being a private path already, I don't know that it's going to, that would, like, I kind of share the concern is I, I don't know where it's going to go in here.
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, what our plan was to locate it between the northerly and southerly set of duplex lots along just west of the public right-of-way, we would make a trash enclosure there that the trash company would simply, once a week, come and unload it. We would have a stuckled facility, cement block facility there, like you see in some of the commercial projects, albeit a little smaller than those, because it's only going to be servicing this many people, so it doesn't have to be as large.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Grove.
I have a follow-up on that. Which preliminary plat are, are you referencing in regards to that configuration? The original or the, the one with the long driveway things?
Commissioner Grove, good question. It's the original one. So if you look at, as I'm looking at my screen, it's the one on the left, and it's between lots 58, 59, between those two driveways. See a driveway to the northerly part of one unit, northerly part of the other. It would be located between those two driveways.
Additional questions for the applicant? Commissioner Grove, did you get everything squared, everything you did?
Yeah, I, I think I'm struggling with how that's actually going to work, because there are size requirements that are, need to be kind of factored in that I don't see, especially like right at the end of, or where the shared driveway is, I just have some concerns without seeing how it's been thought through.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, this is, this is staff. If I could chime in on, if I could chime in on that closure. So I think we really have to think about that, and, and the reason why I'm thinking about it is because I'm a Meridian resident, and my bill has my tote service in with my water and sewer. So how is our utility building companies going to figure out how to charge the appropriate trash for each one of these individual lot owners? Or how is the HOA going to set up the payment for that? So to me, that becomes a problematic issue that we're passing on to future homeowners in the subdivision, and that's something that we do not want to do or encourage. So I'd really take that into consideration in your deliberation tonight, that I wouldn't encourage that. Certainly, that could be considered a commercial rate charge to those homeowners that could potentially be a higher rate than what they anticipate paying as all of us as Meridian residents enjoy now that are pretty low tote rates. So again, I haven't seen it in my 13 years with the city where we've required an enclosure in a residential subdivision. That's really meant for a commercial setting. So again, I guess from my perspective, I would not be supporting that request, and I would encourage you not to do the same. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I was going to voice one other concern in case the applicant wanted to address it, but my concern is if you put it between lots 58 and 59, you may have people that are in that neighborhood that take advantage of that trash enclosure and drop things like furniture or bigger parcels that normally wouldn't be collected by a trash cart, and then you've got a bunch of junk sitting between those two lots that is hard to manage and hard to pin on who dropped it where, and I, I'd see the same concern that staff just represented. It's tough to figure out the fair distribution of that, and I think it would be hard to manage how much trash people would be allowed to have per week as well, before they need to, you know, take a run to the dump or something. I, I think you could have a problem with someone dumping three trash can loads worth of stuff into the compactor just because they can. I, I have a lot of concerns about that, too.
Thank you for that, and I appreciate, Bill, your input, thank you. Any additional comments or questions for the applicant? Hearing none. Mr. Jewitt, we'll come back to you after we take public testimony. If there is any, we'll let you close, sir. Madam Clerk, is there anyone who would like to testify in this application?
Mr. Chair, we didn't have anybody signed in, but I do believe Tony Baggio, who's joining us via Zoom, has his hand raised for this. Tony, one moment, please.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Tony, you should have the ability to unmute yourself.
Tony, if you click on the bottom-left corner of your screen, there's a mute button.
I know how to do this. All right.
Sir.
Let's go.
Please state your name and your address for the record, and the floor is yours, sir.
All right, thank you very much. Yeah, it's been a long little thing. So Anthony Baggio, formerly, 1414 West Joshua Street, Meridian, Idaho. So I live in the new development that Jim built, and what's being built around the corner is a concern. So what I would like to understand, which I didn't get in the conversation, is originally the number of lots for the original preliminary plat was 11, of which there was nine single homes and four duplexes. Now, what's changed is I don't know how many duplexes in single lots, because that was not conferred. So that's my question, number one.
And Mr. Baggio, we'll have Mr. Jewitt respond to you when he does his closing. Make sure that that's very clear.
Okay, good, because, okay, so the reason I bring that up is because the last time we had a TIS here was 2017, before the 28 homes were built here. So the, the travel and the people getting to Linder have been growing, and if we're going to add 60 more cars, based on what the council did with Tanner Creek, which is going to be 550 more cars, we're going to have a big problem. So I need a TIS. Secondly, I would like to have access, and I have taught, I am a director on the HOA for Mallard Landing. We have access for construction, but now... We have access for construction, but not for house building. Why can't we have both? That's a request. We have people selling in the original Mallard Landing right across from where I live because of everything happening. They all wanna leave because of the volume of construction traffic. So what we have here is not a city of Meridian issue. We have a ACHD issue. And that's a Tanner Creek thing. And now it's this. So whoever is running ACHD is not a forward planner. That's second. Then the general trash situation, everybody on the council has mentioned their good comments on that and I agree with that. It's ridiculous to have a central dump for duplexes because Jim Jewett got grant rights for the land that I live on and he got grant rights on the land that he's trying to develop, which is in complete opposition to doing duplexes in Mallard Landing. So he built his own duplex in our little area and didn't pay the HOA. Now he's gonna build four or five, I don't know how many more, but I'm not very comfortable with somebody who does those types of things. And then says a central dump site. So that's it. Thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate you being here tonight. Thank you for participating. Um, if there's anyone else in the public who would like to testify this application either via Zoom or in person, please raise your hand using the Zoom application or raise your hand in the audience. Fisher Seal will point you out. Not seeing anything on the uh, panelist side or attendee side, I mean. Mr. Fisher Seal, we're good in the audience, sir? Yeah. Um, Mr. Jewett, would you like to close? Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, Chris, uh, it's Jim Jewett again. Um, so I'll answer Mr. Baggio's questions. The original application and the original proposal that went from the neighbors was for seven new residential lots and four duplex lots totaling eleven. After that, submittal staff requested that we lose one lot that resulted in six new residential lots for duplex lots. And that was the application that came before you in June. Um, so that is what our request is, is for four duplex lots and six additional residential lots. Um, uh, there was reference to another subdivision. I don't know what that subdivision is. But Mr. Baggio did suggest that we get a TIS. A TIS is, is not required for an additional traffic count that we have. The HAC has found that all the internal roads meet the, the requirements of our additional traffic. HAC and staff are not supportive of any, putting any additional connections onto Linder Road. So there was no TIS required and there wouldn't be for this many lots. Five hundred lots, yeah, that, that's a TSI, but not this. Uh, he talked about my grants rights having to do with the subdivision. Yes, I, I did obtain the, the grantor's rights for the previous subdivision that will extend to this subdivision. That's a course of business. I don't know if that's really a, an issue. As I do these annexations, I specifically I address documents within the HOA documents that provide the that I can put a duplex on these additional phases, but not previous phases. Oh. Um, the, the trash receptacle. I was offering that as a, a solution to everybody wheeling their trash cans to the curb. I wheel my trash cans to the curb. Most of Meridian wheels their trash cans to the curb. Um, there's common driveways all spread out Meridian and people wheel their trash cans to the curb. So I'm okay with whichever direction staff and the council and the commission want to go when it comes to trash. I can understand that even in my, some of my commercial projects, I go there and I see trash that's, don't know where it came from and people use them to get rid of the stuff. Um, so I know how trash receptiles can be abused. It was just a way I could offer a solution to what was perceived as a problem having to do with trash receptacles at the curb. Hopefully I would have addressed all of the concerns. With that, I'd stand for any more questions.
In regards to the construction, uh, access, can you address that? That was an ACHD requirement or allowance. Can you talk about that real quick?
Yeah, Commissioner Fitzgerald. At the previous hearing, it was requested that I inquire. I did inquire and HAC responded with yes, during the construction of the subdivision, they would allow the temporary access, but not after the road construction was done. From that point on, the, the individual home construction has to occur through the public streets. And I understand their point. They don't have no idea the timing of when one home will be built or the next home will be built. In theory, we're gonna do them all right away, but things happen that change that. And they wouldn't want to keep a temporary construction open indefinitely. And I get their point and there might be able to be a little room with HAC if they know that we're going forward with the initial four duplexes right away and allowing us that access for those. But I, I just think that it's not an indefinite thing that HAC is willing to grant.
No, you have to, no, you have to cut off one of the duplexes to get the rest of the development done.
Sorry, Mr. Baggio, you have your time. Sorry. Go ahead, Mr. Jewett. Sorry about that.
Um, and so, you know, I will continue to work with HAC and, and to work with the neighbors. I do understand when the last phase is at the back of any subdivision and all the construction traffic has to go past the neighbor. I, I do understand it. I do understand it's an inconvenience. Unfortunately, that's just the way this played out and I, I'll do the best I can in obtaining whatever temporary easements I can with HAC. But I, I do have to say that construction of the roads and all those dump trucks and cement trucks and grading material won't, not coming down their street is a great benefit to them, allowing us to utilize our existing access for all that. Will certainly mitigate a lot of that um, from the neighbors.
Are there any additional questions for Mr. Jewett?
Mr. Chair.
Go right ahead, Mr. Grove.
All right, um, I had a question. You had mentioned um, being able to, or be amenable to uh, changing some of the lots uh, to, to be a different size or shape. Which lots were you considering? Are you talking about lots sixty five, sixty six and sixty seven on the original primary plat?
So the one lot six, it looks like, unfortunately, my screen is so small, but it's the three lots to the north of the common driveway going to the east. I would reconfigure those into two lots versus the current three.
And with that, just as a follow up question, would those, would that street man stay where it is or would you make the cul-de-sac bigger? Um, what, what, I guess, and then the, the access would both, or for both lots are off of Spoonbill? Is that kind of the, the line of thinking?
Uh, Commissioner Grove, like I testified earlier, I don't think that it reduces the amount of lots that would access the common drive. It would certainly allow the common drive to slide north and make the three lots to the south a little larger. And then just one lot taking access from the public road versus two lots. Um, I think that to get to that rear lot without creating a flag lot has to be a common drive. Uh, I just don't know how else to accomplish it. If I turned and made them really long and skinny, but that really isn't functional. We just have a real limited frontage along the, the private, I mean, excuse me, the public road. Uh, so if you were to lose them one, I, I certainly would wanna try, slide the common driveway slightly north, make the three on the lots on the bottom a little deeper and then just reconfigure, have one lot taking access off of um, Spoonbill and then the, the lot in the back would still take its access off the common drive. And that was, sorry.
Sorry, go ahead.
That would provide for a little, some additional on-street parking along Spoonbill, having one less driveway cut on that street.
Thank you. I understand what you're saying. I guess I'm just looking at it a little bit differently and thinking that there would be a way to get better parking up front and have longer lots, but if, if that's not the direction, or if that's not feasible, I understand. So, thank you.
Commissioner Grove and other commissioners. I don't, I, if you'd see the amount of iterations that we've made on this plat even before submitting it, it, it's, it's an infill. It's problematic. It's difficult. It's, it's not the easiest thing to do. As you can see in my attempt to make our four lots, i- it, it is really problematic and we struggled to find a plat even that I was comfortable with submitting. So I, I would, I would just ask you to just please consider all the time I put into this and trying to configure out that I don't know how I can do the common driveway with, with, with one less access. It's just, the frontage just makes it real problematic.
Mr. Chair.
All right, go right ahead.
I just, I, I mean, in looking at this, I've, you know, it seems like we've got in the current configuration, I, I, I like what the applicant's attempting to do with facing the, the homes towards Linder. But it, and there's only so much creativity you can do. I mean, I'm, I'm kinda getting to it. It seems, seems like we're trying to put ten pounds of apples into a five pound bag here. So in, I mean, in what I'm looking at and let's instead of trying to go mixed use in here, um, I mean, wouldn't it be simpler to simply have duplexes on both sides of this road? Extend the road down to the bottom, have the turnaround at the bottom of it and call it a day? I, I, I mean, maybe I'm oversimplifying it, but to me, I mean, there's, it, it's a very, very small space. Um, I mean, either that or, you know, ditch the idea of, of duplexes and just, you know, do like the land to the south of it. Have, you know, a, a, just basically make it a giant turnaround with some houses that spring off of it. So and, and I understand this is probably the thousandth hour you've spent on this um, in timing of it. So just maybe less creativity is something that can be applied here and you'll probably rarely have ever hear me say something like that about this, but I mean, knowing that this is infill, I'd like to see it filled in. But having it fit a few more criteria would be nice and, and to me, you know, I, I think simplifying the road structure and simplifying the layout of it just overall would probably help everybody. That's gonna clear up a lot of issues as far as where do trash cans go? How does the fire department turn around? You know, on and on and on, for me, anyway.
I, I believe that was Commissioner Neil. My screen just says City Meridian. Um, uh, the, the idea of putting duplexes on both sides obviously simplify things. And I'm certainly not opposed to that. It provides a diversity. I, I think that the neighbors would rather have seen some level residential versus all duplexes. Um, and I think the mix was appropriate and that's why I went down that path. Again, I, I appreciate your comments and I, I have put a lot of time into it. It is infill. It is problematic. Yeah, everything I've done here, I'm not asking for any exceptions to any UDC rule. I have met every reading UDC rule. I've met every zoning guideline. I'm, I'm right in the middle of the density, which is appropriate under the comprehensive plan. So I'd like to just have a recommendation based on my current plat and we can just go from there.
Additional questions or comments for the applicant? Mr. Jewett, thank you for being here tonight, sir. We will deliberate and see where we go from here.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Uh, can I get a motion to close public hearing?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Second.
I have a motion, a second to close the public hearing on H twenty twenty dash zero 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 five, uh, Landing South. All those with favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passed. Who wants to lead up? Mr. Mallard, you're unmuted. Does that mean I get to take advantage of that unmuting? Go right ahead, ma'am.
I suppose you can. I know Commissioner Castanelli's unmuted too, but that's all right. I'll go first.
I saw you first.
Um, I, I really struggle with this one. And I know we did last time we heard this too and we I was a little disappointed that the revised plat wasn't um, more of a significant change. It was actually reasonable for consideration because we've given them some feedback on what we wanted to see differently and um, what came back to us was not a, a practical use of the land. So I was a little disappointed because we, we didn't really have another option to look at. We basically just rehashed um, what we saw last time. So it was a little bit disappointing there, but I, I understand that the applicant has worked really hard on this and I certainly appreciate his um, creativity and um, trying to bring a different product style than, than Meridian has seen. A couple of comments I had last time, I, while I like that the, the units face Linder Road and kind of give more of that boulevard feel, it almost still feels out of place to me um, because you only have eight duplex units facing Linder and everything else is facing internally. And so when you're driving, it looks a little almost out of place versus what you'd see in like a downtown Boise or you'd see in a downtown Meridian type thing where everything's facing the main road and you've got the access drives on the back. I, I still struggle with that concept a little bit, even though I understand where they're trying to go with it. If it went for, you know, a quarter mile or half mile and had more consistency or it was next door to commercial where there was easy walkability and it was nice to have those front porches facing Linder, I, I, it could be different, but to me, it could be a challenge long term because it might look like it doesn't fit the rest of the neighborhood over there. So that's one comment I have. Two, I, I don't like the idea of the shared um, it, trash enclosure. I think we've already kind of covered that though. I, I think that could be problematic. We talk about shared drives all the time. I, I hate seeing more than two driveways off of a shared drive just because it causes challenges for people backing in, people needing to turn around if someone has a truck or has someone's a motor home or whatever it is. Um, you're not likely to have a motor home if you're living in a duplex, but you still might have friends that wanna come over and even though there's a few extra parking stalls in there, I, I don't know that it's sufficient enough if you're gonna have someone over for a Super Bowl party or, or whatnot. So it's, it's a small piece of land and a lot of homes in there and not that it's our job to, to redesign it, but you know, if I was looking at this with um, i- i- if I was a developer, you know, I could consider maybe doing um, duplexes on the where fifty seven and fifty eight are and then on the right where, um, I'm sorry, I can't see the numbers. Where sixty seven and sixty six are, you could do, you know, two sets of duplexes there where you still get your eight units and then use the rest of that cul-de-sac just to build out some nicer big lots and maybe, maybe have a couple of shared drives that go to two lots in there. That's probably how I would look at configuring it to make it a little bit better. But I, I think we're still, we're not where I feel comfortable with this going through. I think it's, it's a tough layout to me, especially with the way that you get into subdivision. It's kind of a winding roundabout, and I know I heard from a lot of the neighbors last time we heard this application, and they wish that it could access Linder directly, but that's not an option for us. So, it is an infill parcel. Could it be a little less dense? I'd probably be okay seeing that because of where it's located. So that's where I'll start off.
Commissioner Castanelli, you are unmuted, so I'll let you comment next, sir.
Okay. Um, I'm, I'm gonna, mostly I'm gonna echo what Commissioner Holland said. I'm gonna start off with a, with a, something that's just driving me nuts when I look at this. Why there wasn't a future stub street coming off of either Waltman or Gander to access this? And I think, you know, had this been a big loop going into one of those, I don't think we'd be having the, he wouldn't be trying to, and I, I love Commissioner Seal's analogies tonight, trying to squeeze ten pounds of apples into a, into a, a five, five-pound almost pregnant box. We wouldn't have that problem, I don't think, but no on the central trash. As much as I do, what Commissioner Holland said, as much as I, I like that idea of the, of the, the front of the duplexes facing Linder, but just with, with just a small number there, it doesn't, it doesn't fit. I understand the applicant wants to maybe try and have a lower price point in there, but it, it doesn't fit, even if we did duplexes on both sides, which might make the street, the layout work a little bit better. It doesn't, you're, you're putting a product that doesn't fit the surrounding, the surrounding neighborhood, I don't think. So I, I, I hate to tell them to go back to the drawing board that they've already spent so much time on, but it, I, well, I, and I get it. I mean, I get how difficult this, they're, they're trying to, trying to infill this. It just, it's a, it's a, man, it's a hard piece, especially when you can't take access off of Linder or anything. It's difficult. I, I sympathize with them on that. I just, it just doesn't seem to fit the existing neighborhood right now. I don't have a, I don't have a magic wand that I could make it happen, but it just doesn't fit to me. So those are my comments. And not, not that I'm necessarily opposed to it, it just doesn't fit.
Thoughts? Mr. McCarty?
Um, yeah, I would, you know, we've had comments, I've spent a lot of time on it, but I, I just, since we made our comments at the last hearing for this, you know, what was brought back was not a lot of time spent. I don't think it's a reasonable layout to even be considered. So I think, you know, it, it is, it's just, it's trying to fit too much in there, or just the wrong product mix, because I think it could be real simple just bringing that road in just a little farther and lining things up around a nice big cul-de-sac instead of trying to put all these little inlets and trying to squeeze all that in. Yeah, and here we are again on another application where we've spent a ton of time a second time. Yeah, I don't know that we do another continuance or just recommend denial on this at this point, since this is all we've been offered.
My thoughts around that, just giving my two cents. I, we're doing our best to get things squared away and help the applicant get down the road, and the, the staff is doing an amazing job of working with them, trying to do that, too. If after the first one, we can't get it down the road, then we got to move it forward in a direction that recommends what we think. And so I don't want us as, I mean, we're relatively laypeople. It's our job to redesign projects. We can give them our thoughts and give them the aspects that we can provide, but we got to trust our staff and, and try to figure out how the best to do it. But I, I'm, I mean, I understand that there was an attempt to do a duplex and then modulate into a single-family residential to the, the buffer in between. But I agree with Commissioner McCarty's comments exactly. You know, bringing a cul-de-sac in, pinwheeling it off with a cul-de-sac and making those all lots that were similar even easier, although you do have a backing up to Linder Road, which is kind of a white elephant. So, I think, per your comments, I agree. I think we've got to help, like, if we can give a continuance once, that's great. I think the last round, we did, gave them two rounds, which was, didn't seem to help either. So, then we got to do the application that's in front of us and, and see what we can go from, go from there. I, I don't know if we're making progress in some of these where we're continuing with our thoughts, and they, they're coming back without a great deal of additional thought.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Grove.
I'll throw my two cents in really quick. I don't have as much issue with the, the Linder-facing fronts. I, I understand what the other commissioners have said. I don't have as much problem with that. I was really looking forward to this application coming back because I thought that we would get a higher, or a lot different creativity with the, the layout on the east side of this project. And I was excited to see what they came up with, and the, the long driveway piece and weird shapes weren't what I, I thought they were going to come back with, and I'm, I'm just really struggling with both the, the preliminary plots that they've shown, for the reasons that we mentioned last time and, and all the things that we said today. So, I don't know what, where to go with this, but I still have some concerns.
Additional comments? Commissioner Seal, did you have thoughts, sir?
No, nothing further. Thank you.
Okay. Well, folks, Mr. Holland, go right ahead, ma'am.
I was just going to say, I, I think everybody's kind of on the same page. I, I would agree that at this point, I don't know that continuing it's going to help us that much, get where we want to be. So, I would lean, lean towards recommending denial on this, this project. And if council decides they want to, you know, reconfigure some things and, and see if they can make it work, I know we've, we've made a lot of recommendations to the applicant if they wanted to, to try and revise something before the, the council hearing, if they still want to try and move forward with the, the denial recommendation. But the way that it sits right now, I just don't feel like it's a, a good fit for the, what the city's comprehensive plan has, what the, with the trash enclosures, with the tightness of turnarounds, all those things. There's a lot of challenges with it to me still. So, with that, I want to make sure I have the right file number here. Hang on. This is Landing South, right?
Yep.
So, after considering all staff, applicant, and public testimony, a move to recommend denial of, to the city council for file number H-2020-0005, as presented during the hearing on June, it's not June fourth, but it is July sixteenth, twenty twenty, for the following reasons, that it doesn't seem to fit the, the comprehensive plan, there are some challenges with turnarounds and access drives, and the revised preliminary plot didn't solve some of the issues that we had discussed as a commission previously.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second to recommend denial of file number H-2020-0005, Landing South. Any additional comments before we take a vote? Hearing none? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passed. Moving on to the next application on the docket.
Hey, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Staff, before we move on to the next item, could I suggest a five-minute break and let staff get readjusted so we can start presenting our applications to you?
Absolutely. I know Brian's coming, that's a great call. So let's take a five-minute bio break to go from there.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Bill, do you have a situation? We're getting closer.
Mr. Chair, I think we're ready to go. Can you see that presentation in front of you?
I can.
Perfect.
We have everybody back. Mr. Grove, Mr. McCarty, Mr. Seal, you're, you're stuck where you are. Mr. McCarty, Commissioner Castanelli, are you still with us? Just making sure we're all back. Okay. Commissioner Castanelli, are you still with us, sir? Or you jumped back in? Just want to make sure everybody's with us before we get started.
You're just putting that through the green light? Yeah.
We're mostly back, but we're waiting on Commissioner Castanelli just to make sure he's with us. He is, there he is. So moving on, on the docket, I'd like to open the public hearing for the 2020 Comprehensive Plan Policy Prioritization, H 2020-0073, and we'll turn it over to Brian McClure for the staff report. Brian, go ahead, sir.
Good evening, commissioners. I'm here tonight to discuss the Comprehensive Plan text amendment with you. Really briefly, though, the current comprehensive plan was adopted in December of last year. It's still very shiny. There are four hundred ninety-two policies, three hundred eighty, which are action items. The plan is really two documents, the regular text, policies, and then the map, of course, which is the comprehensive plan, and that focuses on the forward, and then the existing conditions report, which is an addendum to the comprehensive plan. The report is needed to address some of the state requirements, and it's focused on where we've been and who we are today. It's usually updated every few years. Why do we plan, and what are the state requirements? In summary, we plan because we're supposed to, for the community good, and to incorporate the community's vision. The seventeen required components of the state enabling legislation, which is on the right, is part of the Local Land Use Planning Act. I would just also note in there that planning and zoning is specifically called out in that act. And this is why we're here tonight. This amendment does not change the map, and it doesn't revise any of the text in the adopted plan. The purpose of this update is to add priorities and responsibilities to the adopted policies. This is needed for transparency, so the public can understand our priorities, and to be efficient. We also said we do it, which is incorporated into the text of the plan. The text on the right here is straight out of Chapter One, under the next steps, and I've highlighted the relevant sections in red. We can't go through all the policies due to the number of them, but you have a complete information in your packets. On a high level, and as a method of process, though, these policies and responsibilities were reviewed and proposed by consensus. I think that's pretty significant. We shared them with city leadership and discussed what was best for everyone. A few areas may receive some proposed tweaks when we do this, the first real update, likely next year, but for now, they remain unchanged. As an example, some of the action items are too big for just one department to delete, and we'll likely want to split those up. Hopefully, you've all been able to take a look at these, and if you have any suggestions, we can certainly take those forward to city council. Briefly, on the right here, you can see a breakdown of policies by topic. Each one of these falls within a chapter or a theme. And here are the policies by lead and priority, and then ongoing by department. These were all in the packet, both the application letter and the staff report. The ones with a timeframe, so low, medium, high, very high, those are like projects, and the ones that are ongoing are more day-to-day or specific to development review. Lastly, and for next steps, priorities will help to inform other planning and budgeting efforts across all levels of City Hall. I do have one slide after this, which is related but not part of the inaction. I guess for now, though, I would stand for any questions on this proposed amendment.
Brian, we appreciate it. Are there questions for the staff?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Seal.
The only remark I'd like to make is just on the priority, it just says, there's a lot of them in here that just say "ongoing." That, to me, doesn't really put them into a bucket. It's kind of nice and tidy as far as what the city's priorities are on that. Is that something that's going to be addressed, or is that on purpose?
Commissioner Seal, that, that is on purpose. We certainly are open to feedback, though. The reason for that is the, the projects that have a, a timeframe, so a low, or a timeframe associated with them, so low, medium, high, very high, those are more something we do sort of one time, we need to implement, do something, there, there needs to be a new plan, there needs to be a new process, there needs to be something. The ones that are ongoing are something that we don't ever finish. We continually do those every, at, at every opportunity or every time we review a plan. Does that help?
Would those be considered high priority, then?
Uh, that is a good question. That is a good question.
And that's more where I'm going. I mean, it's hard to define in there, and understandably, I mean, there's a lot of things that are ongoing, because, I mean, there's a lot of things that are marked that way, but it would be good to know, even though they're ongoing, what the priority is of those. You know, I mean, if there's something that happens every day, every week, every month, is that something that's still a priority to the, you know, to the interworkings of everything? Or is lower priority, but it comes up regularly?
Commissioner Seal, maybe I can help with that, then. So, the intention is to do it at every opportunity. So, there are things we never do not want to do, it's just they don't always come up all the time. So, you might see a plan reviewed next week that has X and Y but not Z, and the following week, you might see one that has Z on it. So, it really just depends on the circumstances. There's some in there, they may say "ongoing," but it'll say like, yearly do an update of this, and then the status or the priority is "ongoing." Well, the action item itself said how often to do it. We just marked it as "ongoing" because we're never going to check it off the list, and we're never going to remove it from the plan. At least, that's the intention.
Be my guest, too, and somebody can correct me if I'm wrong, but I would, based on change in mayor, change in City Council, it may shift, correct?
Commissioner Fitzgerald, yes, so this is a living document. We typically review this once a year. We provide an update to council. Sometimes we remove them because they've been done, sometimes we add new ones, sometimes there's changes for other reasons.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, if I can just add a little context to it as well. If you think about it this way, with development applications, you know, it's... A lot of times, the way the code's written, the comp plan's set up, it's, the comp plan's the visionary document, the code is what we use to enforce that. So, when we start looking at developments, a lot of times, those certain things are triggered with development, not necessarily driven by a city priority or a city project. So, some of those ongoing priorities or policies that we have would be... An example I could give you would be along the Chindon Corridor, where we have a policy that says preserve right-of-way future widening. Yes, we're not getting that road widened right now, but it is a priority for us to widen that through that corridor, and we work with our transportation agencies to get that done through the development process. So, we may never get to the finish line on that priority, but it doesn't mean that through the development process, we don't make that a priority to at least set aside a future right-of-way for that to happen. And you can see the fruits of those labors today with Chindon being widened and development occurring along that corridor, and all the public and private partnerships occurring up there. So, I think that gives you some example of why some of these have to stay ongoing, because they are, they are a longer time... It's hard to put a timeframe on it, because you just don't know when properties are going to come in, when they're going to develop, and what obstacles you're faced with trying to get some of these priority provisions. What I'm trying to articulate is you don't know when these properties are going to come in and develop, or when the city's going to have the funds, or the agency partners are going to have the funds to do some of those projects as well. But it sets the basis for at least having a discussion with our council and those partnering agencies as well, so that we can send a letter to them or let them know, hey, this is in our comprehensive plan, we think this is important. And I think if a lot of you keep, hear the message of the mayor, he's pushing for that Linda Road Overpass right now, and so that is a priority. But again, it's still ongoing in our comprehensive plan. But it's something that we definitely need, and how we communicate to our partnering agencies as well.
As a follow-up to that, just in the layout of it, would it make sense to have, I mean, a priority and maybe a time scale or something along those lines as far as the heading? That way, it's understood, and the reason, in my head, it, I mean, I'm... Like, we pick on pathways and things like that, I mean, that's an ongoing, but is it? You know, how big of a priority is that in the mix of everything else that's going on? So, just trying to get a sense of, holistically, what are the high priority items versus what are the, you know, low and medium priority items? And then you get a sense of, you know, this is something that happens. If it's ongoing, essentially, it's going to happen all the time, or it really has no end. Where other things, you know, they have a termination date on them, or something attached to them where a goal may be that to have something completed by that time.
Commissioner Seal, you can certainly pass that on to City Council if you wish. We do have that outlined in the staff report and the letter, but if you want something like that in the plan, I can, we can see if we can fit that in there somehow. Appreciate that.
Thanks, Brian. Additional comments or questions for staff? So, Brian, since you invited the opportunity, the only thing I'm going to share is, I think, if, and I think council knows it, the mayor knows it, if, when Chindon is done being widened and the citizens realize that there's a giant bottleneck, I think the city is going to be in a really bad spot. I think the ITD, ACHD, Meridian partnership needs to come together to fix that problem in short order. Because all the barrels that have been up and will be up for the next six months, when it's all said and done, and there's a bottleneck between Meridian and Locust Grove, I think people are going to lose their minds. So, that's just food for thought. As we look at prioritization, I think that is crazy. And I had the conversation with Director Ness about that specific thing, and he said that would never happen. They would never let that mile stretch not get fixed. And so, I'm pretty disappointed by the fact that that's... We're widening that road, using Starz money to do it, Costco money to do it, and other developers' money to do it, and the state and the city can't come together to figure out how to widen a mile stretch of road while we're doing it. So, that would be my only comment, and the mayor can beat me up later, but that's, I think that's crazy. We're going to see a massive influx of folks moving from to the state of Idaho, moving to the Chindon campus where HP is, and we're not taking advantage of an opportunity where we've mobilized to fix the road, and we're going to leave a mile stretch of bottleneck. So, just a comment, and that's not towards staff, just it's a policy decision that someone's made, and I think it's a really poor one. So, just wanted to share.
Commissioner Fitzgerald, thank you for sharing that. I do agree with you.
I know you guys do.
I'd say ditto.
With that, do we, Andrea, or do we need to make a motion to recommend approval of these? What is the request?
I believe you do.
Okay. Well, if there's, do we have public testimony that needs to be taken on this? Madam Plurk, is there anyone out in the audience that would like to testify on this application?
Mr. Chair, there is not.
Okay. Is there any, I know there's one more person online that's an attendee. Anyone would like to testify, please raise your hand. Commissioner Seal, is there anyone in the audience that wants to testify? Nobody left?
There is no one in the audience.
Okay, thank you. Awesome.
Interpace, Matt.
Brian, we really appreciate the input and the, just the information. I think it's great for us to understand how you guys work through this, so thank you. And did you have it before we go? Is that for the next application?
This is just the before you go. You can read it if you want. I don't have to go through it. I just would put a plug in for using the online plan. It's pretty interactive, and you can search and do all sorts of stuff. So, if you haven't checked it out, please do so.
Thank you for the information, for letting and sharing with us. We appreciate it. With that, can I get a public, or I mean, a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Motion and a second, close the public hearing on H 2020-0073, the Comprehensive Plan Policy Prioritization for 2020. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Team, any comments or thoughts before we make a motion? I appreciate the information greatly. I think Commissioner Seal's comments were well outlined. I think that makes sense. See where the council goes with that. But any additional comments?
Mr. Chair, I would just say thank you to staff. I know they've been working really hard on this comprehensive plan, and I sat on that committee, and they've done a great job with the website tools and trying to make it really accessible for the public. And I know that prioritizing these things is not easy to do, so I just wanted to say thank you to staff for all their hard work on that.
I agree with that clearly. It was informative as heck when I read through it, so thank you. I thought it was really well laid out.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Grove.
I'll go ahead and do the motion, then.
Sounds good.
After considering all staff and applicant testimony... I just lost my place. See if I can, can't do this from memory. Sorry, I'm still new. I guess I stayed there for like a year, right? Okay. After considering all staff, applicant, and public testimony, I move to recommend approval to the City Council of file number H 2020-0073 as presented in the staff report for the hearing date of July 16th, 2020.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to recommend approval of file number H 2020-0073, 2020 Comprehensive Plan Policy Prioritization. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye, real quick.
Aye.
Oh, we have a comment. What's up, Commissioner Seal?
Yeah, I just had a comment about adding a column for the timing, so that they can classify all the priorities from low to very high. I would add that in there.
That's up to the motion maker. Commissioner Grove, that's your call.
Okay. We can add that in. How do you, we want that worded, I guess. Commissioner Seal.
I was going to put it in as just literally with following modifications, to add a column for timing and classify all priorities low to very high, or the scale that's provided in there. As far as I can tell, it's low to very high. I don't know that there's any more.
Okay.
Than that.
All right.
Are you modifying your motion in that regard?
Yes.
Is the second or okay with that?
I am. Second continues.
Okay, second continues. I have a motion and a second to recommend approval of file number H 2020-0073. You'll try this again. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? And motion passed. Brian, we'll go back to you for the second one. I'll open the public hearing on 2020-UDC, or the 2020 UDC text amendment, H 2020-0072. Start with the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm actually going to be presenting this one.
Okay, go ahead, Bill.
This evening, so give me a moment here. I'll bring up another screen at the table that I have to share with you tonight.
Adrienne, I like your mask. That's nice.
All right, Mr. Chair, can everyone see those changes now?
Yes, sir.
Or at least the table here?
Yep.
Perfect. So, Mr. Chair, members of the commission, last item on the agenda this evening is the 2020 UDC text amendment. I think this body is aware that staff tries to come forward at least once a year with some proposed changes to the UDC. The one, this year, we're going to attempt to do two in a year, just because, one, we heard loud and clear through the comprehensive plan process that there needed to be, public involvement did not seem to be very transparent in the eyes of our community. And as much as staff has improved the system over the years, trying to be, increase in transparency, we realized that we can do things a little bit better. And so, that's really the first phase of the changes before you this evening, is really to change some procedural changes in our code to require a greater radius to our citizens, so that they can participate in the process. We've also partnered with code enforcement, like we did on last year's changes, to help them do their job better. We actually have Lacy Oy, who is the planning, code enforcement planning supervisor this evening here. She's here to answer any questions you may have, at least on the first section of the text amendments. And that's really has to pertain to Chapter One that we have here. So, it's really the first two pages of the table of changes. Again, these are only being proposed to help them do better, help them with their job of enforcement. I know in my conversations with Lacy, we're a close partnership. We want to make sure that they understand our codes, and that whatever job they do out in the field, it's easier to enforce. In my conversations with her, again, she says they come from a place of education rather than... So, they want to help educate the public more so than enforce the rules. But I won't go into all of the proposed changes. Again, this is just to kind of clean up the code, clarify some sections, at least in Chapter One, on how they can enforce the code. And it just, again, it helps educate the public a little bit more, but it also helps them to do their job better. So, I turn it over to you for any questions you may have for the code enforcement officer that's here this evening. If you don't have any questions, then I'll go ahead and continue on with my presentation.
Thanks, Bill. Is there any questions on the code enforcement side, so that Lacy can be a part of that conversation? Lacy, we appreciate you being here tonight. Hopefully, you don't have any questions. So, Bill, you can carry on, sir.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, next section, really, the changes tonight, we have, one, our code enforcement changes. Two, we have a couple cleanup items in the code. And then, three, again, as I was mentioning to you, is just clean up some of the process improvements that we shared with the City Council about six to eight weeks ago with them. And again, this was some of the feedback that we were getting from our customers or citizens or residents. And I know this body's pretty familiar with some of those changes. Recently, we had someone testifying that, you know, with these plans that we have coming before you, a lot of times, there could be a lot of different modifications to those plans, and they come in at certain points of the process, and the citizens don't always understand how the process works. And certainly, we want to make sure that we share that information with them, but we want to make sure we share that with them in a prudent timeline, and not just get it at the last minute, so that, one, staff isn't scrambling, you're scrambling, not getting the information that you need in order to make a decision. And it also will help us formulate a better recommendation for you moving forward. So, that's really what I want to spend my time on this evening, is just focusing on the process improvement changes in the code that we're proposing this evening. So, the first one that we realized recently, we had a home occupation that came, the staff approved. And one of the residents, adjacent neighbors, did not feel that the resident met the requirements of the code. So, they actually appealed the director's decision. And we realized, and that went before City Council, and we realized that that process wasn't laid out very well. So, essentially, that person that appealed the AUP application had to put up a public hearing sign, and that was four by four, for the City Council review. It just didn't make a lot of sense for an appellant to put up a big sign in their front yard to dispute what their neighbor's doing on their property. And so, we worked with our legal department to realize, at least, change the code to make it a little easier to clear that. If those City Council reviews are coming forward, and you have smaller acreage, you'll have the ability to put up a smaller sign. So, essentially, we're just making it a little easier for the customer to post within the city's requirements correctly, and not require the larger sign. And then, we also lessen the acreage from three down to two. So, again, this is more of a procedural change than anything. I really didn't get any feedback from any of the development community on this particular change this evening. The second one is quite a bit of improvements, or some, quite a few changes that we anticipate. So, currently, we require with annexations, everything that requires a public hearing requires notification. And the way the code's written, we usually notify residents within 300, or property owners within 300 feet of a project boundary. This proposed change is changing that, or at least, and that includes the radius notification for neighborhood meetings. So, this particular change is actually increasing the notification radiuses for neighborhood meetings from 300 feet to 500 feet. One, we think that's going to get more people involved in the neighborhood meeting. The other thing that we did was we put some parameters on how much time between applications submitted and when you hold your neighborhood meeting. So, right now, what, the way it works is, there's a minimum of a 10-day process for the developer to get an application to us for a neighborhood meeting. So, essentially, a development... to get an application to us for a neighborhood meeting, so essentially, a developer can send out a notification for a neighborhood meeting, wait five days, hold the meeting, and then wait an additional five days to submit their application, that's the minimum process right now. The way this is structured, it'll be twenty days, essentially, you have to send out your letter, wait five days, but you have to wait fifteen days, excuse me, then you have to wait ten days before you submit your application. So we're going from a ten day window, minimal window, to a fifteen day window. And why we did that is to allow the applicant time to address some of the concerns they hear during that neighborhood process. I think this body's very aware of some of the contentions and arguments that can occur at those neighborhood meetings and where they don't feel like all the information was shared, the plan doesn't match what they showed at the neighborhood meeting, and then all of a sudden, we get up here in a debate with, between the residents and the applicant, and it just doesn't seem like it's a very transparent, fair process for both parties. So this is what this is trying to do, the other thing is, we're making it very specific on what days you're supposed to hold those neighborhood meetings. So you can see here on number four, on the proposed changes, we're saying they need to be held on Mondays, Tuesdays, Wednesdays, or Thursdays, and cannot be held on any holidays. And then there's a time period too, they should be held between six P M and eight P M. And then underneath that, we're saying it has to be held within a five mile radius of the proposed project area or city hall. So we wanna make sure that the meeting's held in some proximity to the, where the project's being proposed. Next item is the same thing with the mailing radiuses, so we're changing what that is as well, again, going from three hundred feet to five hundred feet, being consistent with the code above it. Next item is probably the one that we received the most public testimony on, at least when I looked at the public record this, this evening, is the timeframe in which we are gonna receive written testimony. Uh, right now, we really don't have anything um in the code, to this, this is something new. Uh, so, as this body's aware, we could, we could be here at the hearing tonight and someone, five minutes before the hearing, someone can submit written comments, and we wouldn't have, know if they were submitted or if it was even included in the public record because we got it too late. So what we're trying to attempt here is establish a timeframe of when people, least residents can submit written testimony on an application. And you can see here, we're saying nu- by noon, a day prior to the public hearings, or essentially giving the applicant a day to get comments before the public hearing. Noon before the day of the hearing, and looking at the propose, uh, the public record, we did receive written testimony from three individuals, one was Sally Reynolds, her testimony was pertaining to open space survey, which, again, none of these changes are even touching the open space at this time, that will come with a ladder, a later U D C changes this, coming up in, in the year. Uh, but the two other ones were, that were specific to this topic, and in their testimony, they were speci- they thought the city should actually have a greater time period, and they were actually recommending two days to receive written testimony, so I don't know if that is the, within the purview of what you wanna discuss tonight, if that's something that the council, that the commission wants to make changes moving forward to the city council hearing. But at least I just wanted to go on record that, uh, they did feel like anything, if an applicant was scheduled for a Tuesday hearing, that written testimony would not be received, the front cutoff day for that would be a Friday, and then for P and Z, it would be a Tuesday. Um, so I'll, again, staff's proposed changes are here, other than that, uh, again, nothing much from the development of community. Uh, these have been vetted before the, with, to the U D C focus group and city council, and again, most of the changes are endorsed by those bodies. So with that, I'll just conclude my presentation and stand for any questions you may have on the items that I discussed this evening, thank you.
Thanks Bill, we appreciate your uh, presentation. Uh, comments or questions for the staff?
Mr. Chair.
Chair.
Uh, Commissioner Grove, and then Commissioner Cassinelli, hop in F word.
Uh, real quick, thanks, Mr. Chair, um, Bill, what, uh, is there a way that you will be notifying or making aware for the public for the written testimony that there's a deadline? Um, what's the like, marketing of that or noticing of that, I guess?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, members of the commission, um, you bring up a good point, and I know Caleb and I and staff, we've all had those conversations on how to, again, improve the process. And so Caleb and I will be putting together, in conjunction with working with, with the team, putting together kind of a one-page summary for best practices for neighborhood meetings so that we can hand out to our citizens and also our development community on what they can expect as part of a best practice neighborhood meeting. In that particular document, I would imagine we're gonna have this exact verbiage in there, letting the community know that the deadlines of what, when written, written testimony will be received, and probably laying out all of that process for them, so uh, we definitely wanna make sure that we get this rolled out correctly for folks so that they understand the process.
Commissioner Grove, did you have a follow-up there, or you?
I'm good, thank you.
Commissioner, yep, Commissioner Cassinelli?
Um, yeah, Bill, I didn't, there's nothing in here on the, on the noticing issue, I wanna talk about that. Um, signage, I don't see anything here, I don't know if we can uh, add, add to that, amend to it, but uh, recently, we had a, there was a uh, uh, an application that, I made a comment, I don't know if it was in public session or emailed somebody, can't recall, where the noticing sign on the property, uh, it was, is very temporary in nature and had been knocked over for uh, basically, almost the entire uh, time period of the notification before it came to planning and zoning. And then when it went in front of, after it went through planning and zoning and then went on to city council, same thing, sign went up, a day later, it's down on the ground, and was, remained down on the ground uh, for the, up until the point that it was, uh, went to city council, so um, I don't know, it, it was, it was, it was by a school, my guess is, uh, you know, it was kids, but is there any way to put in there um, uh, something that would, would require those signs to be in the ground, a little bit more permanent on uh, on, on certain developments so that the sign doesn't get knocked over, doesn't get covered up? Cause for some people, I think that's only, you know, that may be the only way they're gonna see it, if you're not within the five hundred foot radius or you're not actively going on to the city's website, um, and, and looking at agendas, you're not gonna see it, that sign is the only thing, if it's, if it's temporary and knocked over, um, to me, that's an issue, I, so I don't know, question, question would be that, I have, uh, I have a, um, two other comments on this, but um, you know, I'll save them until everybody else gets a chance, so if you can address that one, Bill, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Cassinelli, I, I remember your email, I remember that discussion very well. And certainly, that, we had some of that language in this, this round, and due to just the time constraints, we said, let's push it out to phase two to maybe evaluate that. Cause some of the co- proposed code changes, or at least some of the vetting that we did with city council, we had proposed potentially putting on a R F P for having a sign company post the sites so that the city could control that a little bit more and make sure that we wouldn't get continued, too many continuances because of these people knocking down signs or applicants forgetting to post a site. It was just too much labor, too much upfront work at this time in order to keep this application moving forward, council wa- really wanted us to get these, these proposed process improvements moving forward, so we elected to remove that from this first phase, and hopefully we will look at, try to, I'll take your comments and then reevaluate that with what we wanna incorporate with phase two, if that's okay with you, Commissioner.
Yeah, you, uh, you rec- you, you recall that, you know that's on the radar, so, yeah, it's just, I would like to see that addressed, uh, as soon as you can, the next, the next round would, would I think be great. So, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Comments or questions for Bill?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Seal, go right ahead.
First one's just a grammatical thing for um eleven four three dash three eight. Um, it looks like you want to include service, but the way that I read it, it's vehicle sales or rental and service. So should that be an or instead of an and? In front of service? Cause the way I read it, it's, it's either vehicle sales or rental and service.
Mm-hmm.
Not breaking service out to be its own thing.
Yeah, we could certainly look at that.
And then, um, one of the things that I'm not seeing in here, and let me emphasis this by saying that I really, really respect all the work that the staff does, um, and I, I try to first read through the staff report, um, you know, and then go through the public comments, go through the agency comments and things like that, but one of the things that I'm noticing more as things get busy is the staff reports are coming in pretty late in the process for, for certain things, and, and again, I understand the load that staff is under, um, and I don't wanna beat up on anybody here, um, too much, but um, it, it would be nice if the agencies also had some kind of criteria for submitting comment. Um, also some minimums as far as which agencies should need to submit comments, and then maybe have that tie into you know, something as far as the staff reports being available for, um, commission to take a look at those, cause again, I, I mean, trying to go through the applicant's submittal without the staff report is like, uh, you know, a little bit like me trying to fumble around in the dark, so, staff report helps turn the light on um, for me, and sometimes it, you know, after I read the staff report, I have to go back in and read different things that were submitted just to make sure it all still makes sense, so. I guess in all, I, I guess what I'm trying to say is, you know, is, is there going to be a criteria for agency submittals um, as far as time and which agencies we need to have, um, submit feedback, and is there something in there as far as when the staff reports need to be available?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, members of the commission, again, yes, the, the last thing we wanna do is get you late staff reports, and we, I, I can assure you there's multiple reasons for that. Not gonna sit up here and make all the excuses in the world, yes, we, we, our deadline is Friday, five o'clock, that, that's our internal deadline to you, so that you have that weekend. And then the clerk publishes the agenda Monday, that's when you get, you're supposed to get the information and review the staff report from us. I can tell you, next month, we're starting a pilot program where the council has, the clerk's gonna be publishing the agendas for the city council meetings a couple of days early, and that's pushed our staff report deadlines to them a few days back, so, I would imagine if that works, and the mayor wants to move forward, some of those changes, we'll communicate that to the commission and try to see what we can to do, do to implement that for the other commissions. Uh, but for right now, we're gonna test it out in August with the city council. And what I've told my staff is if build enough time in here to get you the information so that you need it, so what we do now is the way it works is the agencies sign up for whether or not they wanna be part of the agenda, and they've done that through the clerk's office, and then the clerks transmits the applications to that agency, so there is no, what we, what the city can't do is we can't force them to respond, what we can do is provide them a copy of the application, and that's what we do. We provide all of those partnering agencies, all of that information. And how they choose to respond and don't, we don't force them to, but I can tell you, if we don't have, from what we hear from the city council and from the commission, traffic's a concern, so we always wanna make sure we have A C H D comments. We know the schools are a concern, we always wanna reach out to our partner and say, hey, what is going on, why, you know, what are your comments on this application, I don't see it in the packet, so we try to reach out and provide that courtesy to those two agencies. The other thing that I try to do, if I know it's a controversial or a larger project that's gonna take a, may take a longer period of time, is I reach out to our agency partners and I say, hey, what's a reasonable timeframe that we can expect comments from you? And then we start, we, we look at our schedule and we go, this is the date we need to target for P and Z, let's back it up there and then work towards that goal. Most of the time that works, but sometimes it doesn't, um, what this body doesn't know, and sometimes we don't, I don't know how all of A C H D works either, but I know if even one resident complains about a staff report, they have to go to the commission, and I can't control who's gonna complain and wanna appeal the staff's decision and go to, and schedule that thing for a night meeting or, or afternoon meeting with A C H D. We can't control any of that. Uh, but I know our communication to those agencies are, I think, very, very good. Uh, I'm not, not a concern that you won't ever get the information you're seeking. Timing for that is an issue, and you, we're starting to see that a little bit more, we're, we're at the eleventh hour and sometimes agencies will change their comments at the last minute, we were anticipating something else, and all of a sudden, they, we have a staff report ready for you, and we get a kink, and we're like, wow, this isn't what we were expecting from you. And so we ask for a continuance, or staff is trying to get that additional information to try to formalize that staff report. And sometimes we can't get that information quick enough to meet that deadline, and so we need to have a discussion with our director and determine whether or not staff has the ability to be more forceful on requiring continuances on the applicant, and bringing that to you as a staff recommendation to continue, cause we don't have all the information to share with you. Uh, it's been our policy to let the, kinda let the applicant drive the continuance or request those continuances. Uh, so yeah, we have some work to do there, and we're trying to do that, the other thing that we've toyed with as well is not scheduling projects for hearings until we have all agency comments. Maybe we don't bring it to you until we work everything out on the front end and then come in, and as soon as we have all that information, we hit print on the staff report and schedule a hearing, a lot of places do that outside of Idaho, they'll wanna get all the comments upfront first and get the, get it set up so that you can go forward without conditioning it that much. Uh, but those are discussions that we kicked off this week to see how we can brainstorm some ideas and see how we can improve on that. The other thing is, we weren't fully staffed, and now we are, and we're getting to the point where we're training people. And you can see them coming up to speed and seeing them grow and, and moving projects through the hearing process, so as we get that experience and get people trained up and hopefully retain good people, I think we'll, our timelines should be getting better and better, I, I've seen that, I track all the projects, so I know where our timeframes are, what's taking us uh, longest, but these bigger projects, I would agree with you, they're taking longer and you're getting them later. And that's something that we have to approve on, and, and we have, and I, hopefully you've seen that, you've gotten some projects earlier lately to where you can read that and get us comments and your questions too, so hopefully you've seen an improvement on that recently. But there have been a couple outliers, where, again, staff's going back and forth with applicants at the eleventh hour trying to get the information so that we can get you that detailed report, and sometimes that does bleed over into the following week. So again, apologies for that, but we're trying.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Mr. Chair.
Yep, one quick, uh, just to add on, I mean, I think your comments, um, I really appreciate the text amendments you guys are putting forward, I think it gives us enough opportunity, it gives a deadline for everybody to be on the same page. So they get the information, we all have the same information at the same time, uh, I think pushing it to forty-eight hours is probably a little bit too long, uh, cause people get their lives are busy and they'll hear about it, the neighbors get together and, but getting it to, at, I mean, you guys are scrambling, the staff's running crazy, we're trying to review things. And so I think having that twenty-four hour period to get everything in is a great thing. And I also think getting the public more involved is a good thing, cause we hear, we'll hear, we're always gonna hear, I wasn't notified. Um, but at least hopefully, um, show that we're being responsive to the citizens' requests, and I think you guys are doing a great job of putting the pieces together, so thank you for these, I think they're, they're a good step. Uh, Commissioner Hall, I'm sorry about that.
No, you're fine, I was just gonna carry on, this isn't really necessarily about the text amendments, but just a comment to what, um, Commissioner Seal was saying. I know we've had a lot of late nights lately with the P and Z commission, so, one, one request I might ask of you is if you see that there's gonna be several that have a lot of written testimony and that we know that we're gonna be going late. Um, one specific request is for the poor guy that ends up at the end of that meeting that doesn't have any public testimony, and they wait till ten thirty, and we're letting them in just because we feel bad for them, but I know at one point, we talked about cutting off commission meetings at, at ten thirty or ten, and we've gone past that several times lately, so I don't know if there's a way to help mitigate that, and it's hard to predict how much testimony you're gonna get or how much deliberation we're gonna have, but um, if you see some contentious ones, we appreciate when you can help us balance those out on the agenda. So just a comment, but thanks for the, the cleanup, and I think, um, you've done some good work here, so, thanks, Bill.
Yeah, appreciate those comments, and I'd also let you know that if there is a controversial project, I try to have the team add that to that table at the, on the first front page of the staff report, so you know it'll go right to the public record and see those issues. Because that's something that's important to us, we want you to know, want you to be aware of the issues and know what's, what's potentially, that it could be a late evening. Because that's something that's important to us. We want you to know, want you to be aware of the issues and know what's, what's potentially, that it could be a late evening, uh, for that hearing. And then I do set the agenda in conjunction with the clerk's office. So I try, I try to get the easier projects out of the way where I don't anticipate a lot of those hurdles, and that way we can get through some business before we get to the, the controversial projects. And then just going back to, uh, Commissioner Seal's comments, I want to let him know that, yeah, we're holding ourselves to earlier deadlines too, just like we are for the, the customers too. So I didn't quite wrap up that comment, but I just want to let you know. That's the, that's the expectation moving forward.
Thanks, Bill.
Yep.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner McCrable.
Yeah, I, I think we're all in total support of you guys, uh, of staff, Bill. Um, I think the comments of getting the staff report is just as much protection for you guys as it is us being able to have the time to read it. Um, you guys do do such a good job. I know I lean heavily on those staff reports as well. Um, but, you know, there is only so much that's humanly possible in a work week. And I think we've seen even a pandemic isn't going to slow down growth in Meridian. So, um, you know, however, if, if there's only so many things that fit on an agenda, and there's only so much that we've done, and if somebody's application has to wait its turn, it just has to wait.
Amen to that.
Commissioner McCrable, anything additional, uh, comments from the team?
No, I, I appreciate all the work that's gone into all of this, and I don't have anything else that would be in reference to the text amendment, so we can wrap it up.
Commissioner Cassinelli, you had a couple of things you wanted to keep for the end. Go right ahead, sir.
Yes, thank you. You, you take good notes or got a good memory there, one of the two. Um, I, one of them was addressed, and that was the, the, the timing of when we see things. So, Bill, thank you for going in detail. Thank you guys for doing that, um, uh, and, and juggling all that. I appreciate it, but I just kind of want to ask about that. The last item on there has brought up something else, and, and I just maybe get, uh, uh, feedback from you of when you might address this unless you, uh, if, maybe you haven't. But what's come up a lot lately are the, um, ways. And, uh, I think the limit is, is six. Is that something that you guys might have another look at and reduce that amount? Because it, it seems like we always, we beat up the applicant. We always ask them to bring it down to like two. Um, so I just want to know timeline, if you guys are going to, I'm not asking you to put it on this, but is that something you've been talking about?
We may want to. It certainly is becoming an issue to have that text amendment, bringing up, maybe go back to four. And the reason why we went to six, because I, I think the applicant, it, it was actually that request came from the development community. I don't remember the, it's been a number of years, probably thirteen or fourteen, or maybe even sooner than that. I, I know it came forth when I did, worked on that spur wing development, Spurwing Greens, when that was bought out by Brighton and Chris Anderson Sundance Company to resurrect that plat. Uh, they had some unique common drive situations where they actually had a U shape, so it was almost like a long U-shaped driveway. And so that seemed to work in that situation where you could have six homes off of that. What's happening is people are using it to just cram a bunch more lots in. So I, I don't know if it's working as effective as it should be. Uh, but again, that section is all, is eligible for alternative compliance. Uh, but certainly, the code used to be no more than four. So I'm not sure what this, again, it's not on my radar to discuss, but I know this second phase will start getting into more code changes, which will be, there will be more involvement with the U D C focus group, who is made up of the development community and other, you know, residents, uh, other business professionals, staff. So if that's something that you would like us to take under consideration, I'm more than happy to add that to the list and see if they're willing or wanting to discuss that and make changes to that section of code.
Yeah, I would love to see that discussed, uh, sooner rather than later. I don't know if anybody else is under the same opinion.
Mr. Chair. Just a real quick, uh, just, uh, kind of in same vein, um, for future, um, pieces like this, is looking at the parking requirements, because that always ends up seeing, feels like that's a sticking point on some of the, like, apartment complex developments and things like that, where the, the minimum doesn't ever, um, meet what we're looking for or what the community's looking for. So just keeping that on the radar. I know it's probably been talked about a lot in the past and will always be talked about, but just kind of keeping that on the radar for that future group.
Anything additional for staff? Bill, I think you guys did a great job. We really appreciate all your efforts, and, um, I know there's constant adjustment, constant looking at, and we just appreciate the work the, the staff's done lately. I know it's been, you guys have been underwater and, and it's good to hear that you're staffed back up and, and getting people squared away. So, um, thank you for all you're doing, and thank you for this.
Yep, thank you. Appreciate it. I'll pass along your comments to others that worked on this as well.
Thanks, Bill. Um, is there any public testimony on this? Sorry, go right ahead.
No, you go ahead. I was in order.
You're fine. Um, is there any public testimony, Madam Clerk? I think we didn't have anybody else, I don't think.
Mr. Chair, there is not. No.
Make sure we're squared away. Um, with that, motion's always in order. Commissioner Seal, were you moving that direction?
Absolutely. Do we need to close the public comment first?
Yep. Can we get a motion to pub- close a public hearing on file number H twenty twenty dash zero zero seven two?
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Um, motion and second, close public hearing on H twenty twenty dash zero zero seven two, the twenty twenty U D C text amendment. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay. Uh, any other comments before we have another motion? Go right ahead if you'd like.
Um, Mr. Chair, after considering all staff, applicant, and public testimony, I move to recommend approval of silly, city council, a file number H twenty twenty zero zero seven two is presented in the staff report for the hearing date of July sixteenth, twenty twenty.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, uh, to recommend approval of file number H twenty twenty dash zero zero seven two, twenty twenty U D C text amendment. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. Thanks, team. Need one more motion?
Mr. Chair, I move with adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion to adjourn and a second to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you so much. Long nights, not too bad tonight, but it's still nine. Commissioner Seal, thank you for taking one for the team again, being in chambers. Appreciate it. I'll swap you whenever you're ready.